The present at the moment is Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, and Mr. Patton. We are expecting Mrs. Lou McCormick, but because of the rescheduling of this meeting from Tuesday when the snow occurred, neither Ms. Carnell or Mr. Convitito, who have prior engagements tonight, were able to readjust their schedules. So we're not expecting the two of them unless something has changed between Tuesday and today. I could have you stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the freedom and justice for all.
A couple of comments if I could about the process tonight that is the process we've used in other nights. The review of the budget is a kind of a cumulative process. At the December meeting, we talk about health and pension, and it's on that agenda. At the first meeting in January, we go through the PowerPoint presentation. And tonight, we have the sections of the budget book that are shown on the agenda. But certainly, board members, if they have a question on the health insurance or pension or the PowerPoint, it's kind of a cumulative thing. At the next meeting, whatever has been on the agenda before, we can talk about that as well as the pages that are by object and by school. And of course, on January 30th, any board member that has a remaining question is free to ask any question from any section of the book, but we do try and go through in some logical way, if you will. Thank you to Jessica and Mark for providing some questions in advance. That doesn't mean that they won't have other questions on other sections of the book or even that might come up tonight. What we do with those generally is those that might get answered tonight will. Others might get answered just in paper form and will be circulated to the entire board and also is posted on our website under the Board of Education section of the Budget section. And indeed, questions that come up tonight, we try to get a Q and A shown so that the answers are shown on that website. We do invite, at special meetings, our bylaws don't provide for public comment, but we do invite the public to send in emails as they listen to the conversation, call us on the phone. We have our phone numbers generally listed. Stop me at a restaurant when you see me out because people have done that as well, and I'm sure that that has happened to other board members, so please avail yourself of that. For board members, sometimes what happens is a board member gets on a roll, and after about 20 minutes, the other board members are kind of saying, "So when do I get a turn?" So I would ask board members that if you see yourself kind of following down a line of questions, maybe relinquish the floor to give other board members a chance to get in on their own questions. And we'll just keep rotating around until, I'll say, somewhere, I expect to get through the first half of this probably by 9:00, 9:15. And we'll take a temperature check of how much progress we're making. And we have generally gone till about 10:30 and asked the board if they want to continue or whether we want to pick up wherever we left off at the next meeting. So that's the timetable that we're on. You'll see that the food service is on as an agenda item. Mr. Llewellyn had asked that that be a topic for conversation. The food service program has generally been talked about programmatically in an April or May meeting. And then there are certain resolutions that are needed to be passed for engagement with the Healthy Foods Program and other things that we have normally put on. Kind of the financial and administrative questions are generally on a June agenda, but Mr. Llewellyn asked that it be able to be discussed at this meeting, so it's been on the agenda. The food service budget is not part of our operating budget, so it is not part of the budget that we act on or vote on during this process. And that's why it's shown separately to show that it's a separate item, not part of the operating budget. Prior to looking at each section, I'll ask the superintendent if he has any general comments that he wants to make on the historical data or the executive summary, the income or the support information. Half the time, he avails himself of that, and half the time, he says, "No, just go to Q and A." And then we'll go through a round robin of Q and A and deal with each section as we go. Any questions from the board on that process? If not, why don't we start? And Superintendent, do you have anything on the historical data section that you want to comment?
No, let's go right to Q and A.
Any questions from the board members on that particular section that you may want to ask that are... Mr. Llewellyn.
Sure. Dr. Title, in the opening letter, we talk about what your goals are for the year, and you note what some of the priorities are in terms of investing more resources in technology, maintenance, and security. What are the district's educational goals?
Well, educational goals are to ensure that all of our students master our rigorous curriculum. In fact, the mission statement that the board looked at the last session, I think, is a really good statement of what the mission of the district is. And so, and I think also laid out in the PowerPoint that, you know, we have six or seven initiatives in place to improve instruction in the district because ultimately, if we're going to get to that, accomplish that mission, then the only way we're going to get there is by improving instruction. And so therefore, many of the items in here, while they're not new, they're in support of that continuing this budget. The way we've laid it out will enable us to keep moving forward on those improvement initiatives that were laid out.
Specifically, what areas are you targeting?
In terms of...
In terms of, what are the objectives in terms of raising the level? You know, is it going to be every child's challenged? Is it going to be we're focusing in on specific topics? What are we changing? I noticed in the budget, we've got a fair amount of paraprofessionals being added, but I don't see kind of the educational, the teachers being addressed in here as much as I do some of the other areas.
Well, it's not always a matter of adding staff or adding additional resources in some cases. It's directing those resources in the areas that come up. So we know we have a curriculum revision schedule so that every six or seven years, our curriculum is kept as current as possible. And so each year, the curriculum development budget may not go up much or down much, but there's a schedule of which curriculum areas come up for review so that we keep them current. So you won't see that in there as a budget increase in that arena, but we are taking a systematic approach to keeping our curriculum as current as possible. The same thing is true with resources. So the general trend here is that when a curriculum area comes up and new resources are purchased, then it ends up in the Board of Ed budget for the first year as an adoption. And then once that's finished, then maintaining that goes out to the schools. So again, you may not see, you know, full-blown new resources across the district, but in those areas where we've, like the areas that you are approving this year, we're budgeting for new resources in those areas for next year. There's money in for professional development in the budget. We've had to increase that due to needing to do additional training on the teacher evaluation program this year. We move that forward next year. So we're continuing our efforts on professional development. And then each of the departments does have a program implementation account and a curriculum development account, and they're laid out in the support information as to what's happening generally in each of those areas. So even if a curriculum area is not under a full review, we're still generally doing work in that area. We're either doing staff training. We may be doing some writing of implementation guides. We're heavily involved in a lot of assessment development because with the new, the Common Core plus the Smarter Balanced and the need for assessments in lots of areas to comply with the teacher evaluation plan, there's a huge amount of work going on in curriculum, but also in the development of assessments because you can't just say, "Well, we're going to have new assessments because of the Common Core." You're also going to have to have new common assessments so that we can comply with the requirements of the teacher evaluation system because that's part of the teacher's evaluation now, and we want to have valid and reliable assessments in all areas. So there's continuous work going on on a lot of fronts, and it's captured in the budget, but it doesn't always reflect as an increase in the budget. It may be simply we are rotating through. The idea is that we can maintain sort of a stable budget in this area by rotating from department to department, adjusting as necessary so that you don't have a big spike in the budget one year where you're doing a ton of curriculum and a ton of textbook purchasing, and then a big drop-off the next year and a big spike. So there's a number of initiatives in place to improve curriculum, instruction, and assessment that are in here, but they may not show as increases to the budget. Sorry for the long-winded answer, but it was a big question.
And also, we are at the end of one of our strategic plans, if you will, three-year strategic plan. We've been awaiting the recommendation from the Policy Committee on the revised mission, long-term goal, and educational goals. And once those are adopted by the board, then that will allow district goals to kind of emanate from them. Other questions? Do you have another question in that section or...
In the front section now. I'm good there. Thank you.
I wonder, Mr. Fattabean.
Can you say "front section"?
The historical data.
Pages 1 through 27.
Just, yeah, I'm just going through, yeah, I'm just going section by section.
Right. The section you're referring to is pages 1 through 27. I just want to clarify. Is that right?
The historical data, the 1 through 27, yes.
1 through 27, all right.
Yeah. Historical data, 1 through 27.
No, 15.
1 through 15.
Oh, yeah. 1 through 15. I'm sorry. 1 through 15.
1 through 15.
I only had, did you have a question in that area or not?
Well, let me check.
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
No, mine's on next section.
I only had one question, kind of following up on a piece of what Mr. Llewellyn asked. Not necessarily tonight, but I'd be curious to have a reaction. When you look at the graphs about the achievement gap, where you look and find in grades three and four or so, that maybe 2% are scoring below in one subject area, 4% in another, but in the reading area, it's 9%. And if the district wanted to say, "What can we do? What additional resources could be made available so that we focused and brought that academic area, reading, in line with the other two and get down into the 2% and 4% range? Is there anything that we can do that doesn't break the bank?"
That's another long-winded question that I'm not inviting a long-winded answer to, but I am inviting some maybe short commentary and some additional commentary later. Is there anything we can do within the budget and resources to address that achievement gap, either in that subject area or by grade or whatever?
I'll try to be brief. Brevity is not my strong suit. So staff has to give me the signal when I prattle on. So first, I want to say that there's two different concepts, I think, that you're talking about here. One was the, when you look at the percentage of students at below basic, third grade was the highest number, and then it tailed down as kids went through. That was a little different from the achievement gap, one which showed the difference between, say, the performance of students with free and reduced versus those with, or not free and reduced, and the same thing with ELL. So I think there are two different questions there potentially. And one is, I think, that we've taken a lot of steps in the last two to three years to really try to put additional resources to work for struggling learners in the elementary grades. I think that generally, you get your best bang for the buck doing additional work with students the younger that they are. I think your window is wider there. Not that you don't want to have additional resources at other levels, but the elementary level is critical. And so, you know, we have added some additional math resource teachers. We've added additional language arts specialists. We have the elementary staffing model. We also revamped the special ed services, putting more teachers in. We also have, you know, two of our schools, McKinley and Holland Hill, are Title I schools, so they do get some additional resources to help deal with the achievement gap issues. So in some ways, you know, we are putting those things in place, and we have, and we want to see that play out a bit before we launch too much further into it. But there's a lot that you could do. I don't think you can do it on the cheap, and that's the issue. You know, if you really want to try to raise achievement level of struggling learners, even in the early grades, I really think it takes, you know, some pretty intense intervention, some of which we do. And we've got a good system now for it, and I think you can see that over time, it's working. But if you really want to get into it, you're really looking at, you know, additional, perhaps extended school days for students, which can be very expensive, extended school years for students that get very expensive. Staff's rolling their eyes at that notion. You know, additional support in each of the schools for identified populations. Last year, we flagged the ELL population as one that needed some additional resources. And while we did a little bit there in terms of personnel and a little bit there in terms of materials, you know, that definitely could use some beefing up. So there's a number of actions we could take, but I think that if you really want to attack it full bore, I think that, you know, maybe in break-the-bank mode. And we have a lot of resources now that I think are effective over time, but could we do more? Of course. That's as short as I can get with it.
Mr. Fattabean.
Yeah. That raises a question of mine and a concern of mine, and that is, obviously, we have resources and availability for the underachieving student, and we have certainly a good advanced placement program. The question I have is what resources are we devoting to the, say, average student or the student that may be able to improve if resources were available to them to the same extent that they are for the underachiever and the overachiever? Because I think the bulk of the students are in that middle-level range that are sometimes often forgotten in the services provided for them and the ability to raise their achievement level as good as it can be or as much as they're entitled to in a public system. Could you comment maybe what some of those guys are getting at?
Yeah, of course. Nobody here, nobody in Fairfield is average, right? So I think that, for one thing, every student is looked at on an individual basis as much as possible through our system. And some students thrive and are doing well, and they really don't need additional support beyond what we have in the, you know, in the current, in the current program. So as teachers see that a student is struggling or is not able to do what they can do, then, you know, they address that. We do have, just as, you know, as an example, at the elementary level in the reading area, if you go into classrooms, what you see is kids are reading at all kinds of different grade levels. Kids are reading during their reading time at their levels that are challenging to them. So we don't see as much of every single student is reading from the same book at the same time. If a student is capable of reading a book that's more challenging, then that's what they're going to be, what they're going to be reading. So within class, we work to where we can, challenge everybody, but it doesn't necessarily mean additional resources. It may mean teachers providing differentiation within the classroom for those students. And then, of course, as you get, you know, into, you know, the high school level where you have the formal levels, then of course, students are, you know, encouraged to take as challenging a program as, you know, as possible. So a lot of the challenge takes place within the classroom, within the level at the elementary and the middle school levels, but, and at the high school where we go into the honors and the AP, you know, you're going to get that. So, you know, I think our, I think all kids are well-served here, but there are some students who need additional support, and, but all students are looked at. I don't know if somebody from my staff wants to comment further on that. No one's jumping up, so it's sort of philosophical.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? Was that it?
That was it. I guess the first beginning section's our...
Okay, yeah. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Income. Two questions. First, and I believe you referenced this in the PowerPoint, and I apologize that I, my notes didn't write, I didn't take that down. Where exactly is the sequester most explicitly impacting here?
Yeah.
And I don't know if this is the best section for the next section.
No, this is the section.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think, my agenda says 1 to 27, which includes income.
Includes income.
Including income.
You're talking about income? Anybody else on historical data?
Well, then, one other question about historical data.
Okay, you have a, want to ask that question first, and then you can ask the question about income.
Okay. On page 11, the cost containment measures, 2010 to the present, which essentially cost containment measures, goes on, it has three pages. Is there anything here that, and I, by the way, will apologize in advance that I did not submit my questions, so that if at any time I ask a question that you would prefer to defer to the next meeting, I'm more than fine with that because that's on me.
That's all right.
Is there anything here that you, that there has been negative, not negative reaction to, but actual negative impact on education or anything that you think is worth reconsidering now or in the future?
Well, I think all of these, yeah, all of these, but some of these clearly have had an impact. And, you know, some of them are cost containment measures that are efficiencies that really don't need to be revisited in any way, shape, or form. You know, moving the high school start times to 7:30 and saving half a million dollars is not something we're going to revisit, even though there was some grief about that when we did it. High school kids really don't like to get up early in the, early in the morning. But certainly, you know, reducing late buses at the middle schools, eliminating them at the high schools, you know, that has some, some impact. But I think, you know, in some ways, people have adjusted, you know, to it. I think that, you know, in a lot of these areas, you know, we wish we didn't have to do this. I wish I could take everything that we've had to eliminate since in the years that I've been here and put it all back in. But, you know, we just can't do that without having the budget just get even, you know, higher than it is. So if there was something that I thought, you know, needed to be addressed, and there was some way to do it that would be beneficial and wouldn't break the bank, as we say, then I would have put it back in here. You might remember one thing we did do, it's in the current year, we had actually eliminated some positions at the high school, which resulted in the high school library being closed two days a week after school. It was open four days a week. And also, there was some less access to the computer labs as a result of that same elimination. After we lived with that for a year, we came back the next year, you know, 18 months later and said, "If we put a couple part-timers on, we could not fully restore the computer lab availability, but we get the libraries open." So, you know, that was something that for relatively small cost, we could get, you know, some of that back in, but not fully, like we had it, like we had it before. But, you know, I wish that, you know, in some cases, that we didn't have to do any of these things, but they were a fact of life. First budget, we had to cut $2.8 million, and another one about $2 million, and, you know, there's only so much you can do to cover for that. So that's kind of where, you know, we are with it. I'm sure people would love to see everything back that was eliminated, but that's just not feasible in this economic environment.
On to the income question.
Actually, I want to follow up on that one if I could, please.
Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, and Mr. Fattabean.
Sure. Dr. Title, one of the things I've heard from a lot of parents is the cutting of world languages and the bringing that back. My understanding was last year when that occurred, I think we substituted office staff for world language. Was that one of the things that was kind of on that plate last year? Didn't we add at the elementary schools, one more support staff?
I think that was the prior year.
That was the prior year?
Yeah. Yeah, those were never played off against one another. The, you're talking about adding the second part-time office coverage at the elementary schools. That was done the prior year, but as it's turned out, that's turned out to be positively brilliant because without that, this whole security that we have with the Buzzin system and everything would have been a disaster. So actually, having that full coverage for both halves of the day has actually been a very important in terms of our security. But the world language reduction by 50%, that actually occurred in the first year of the cut, in the 11, 12 budget. And that was for fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. And so, yeah, so that's, that's the sequence there. I don't think we ever sort of traded that where we cut the world language to bring in the after-school. I don't recall it that way. I think they're a year, a year apart.
The world language came in 11 and 12, and then the next year is when the elementary came back in.
So there was no world language cut last year?
No. There was a conversation about whether, now that it's only 50%, is it worth it to hold, to have it at all? But that conversation was a very short, brief one at all.
Yeah, no, last year, there was no, I mean, in the current year we're in, there was no change in the status of world language.
Okay. Patton, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly wants to follow up on that. Can she, can she interrupt? Yeah, thank you.
And in fact, the topic did come up when we were discussing that part-time office staff about, is this an either/or? And the cost differential was significant. This was not a, we're adding this, and I would make up numbers if it were $500,000 versus $100,000. I mean, it wasn't an either/or because if we'd given up that office staff, it could not have then been replaced by an equal world language replacement.
That's correct. Mr. Patton.
I'm not sure if this is in terms of historical data in, like on page two and three with the CMT scores. But one thing we often hear from parents, especially those of us who have new middle schoolers, is that between fifth and sixth grade, often teachers feel in sixth grade that the students weren't properly prepared for the extra workload in middle school in sixth grade. So my question is, are there new initiatives or has there been discussion or could any of your staff comment on, certainly, scores may be fine in fifth grade and going into sixth. So, you know, reading, writing, math, you know, the actual, you know, specifics of those are fine, but in terms of knowing how to, to study for exams, what the preparation is for exams, that sort of thing, has there been any change or is there any discussion on that particular subject?
I think the transition points are always a point of discussion among the principals and the curriculum leaders. And I think everywhere I've ever worked, and I know as a high school teacher, I always followed a high school teacher, I don't know what they're doing in middle school, but, you know, whatever it is, is not working, right? And then those school teachers would think the same thing about the elementary, and then the elementary teachers are saying, "What are they doing in preschool?" and so forth. But, so that's a constant, you know, worry, and I, really, we try to, you know, make decisions based on the, you know, data and evidence. And I know there's anecdotes, and kids come home and say, "This is really difficult." But, you know, I think that's an issue that we're constantly, you know, striving to work on. Something that I know, for example, when we were, you know, when we're looking at curriculum, even though we may be just looking at, say, elementary curriculum, I know that the curriculum leaders at the two levels are talking to one another to try to assure continuity between the grades. I know that we're constantly, you know, between the eighth and ninth grades, trying to keep some consistency. But there's always going to be, I think, that jumping up from one level to the next where, you know, there's going to be a little bit of shock treatment. And, you know, we try to keep, keep an eye on it and do as much as we can in the, you know, in the transition and keep an eye on the, on the kids. So it's always on our radar screen. And it's just one of those things where you really need to, you know, look at what's the evidence around this and what can we do about it. So I don't know if anybody else would like to comment on that transition piece. I see two high school headmasters sitting back there that would love to weigh in on the eighth to ninth grade transition because I know you worked so hard on it. Or anybody else? Nobody wants to join the party?
And I warn them that they can sit in the back of the classroom, but they're still going to get called on.
Right, right.
Mr. Fattabean, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Yeah, on page seven of the historical data.
there is a enrollment chart. And if, as you know, and as we all know, enrollment has increased over the years. And in some degree, we like to attribute that to the fine district we have, as well as growing population. But the reality is many other districts have not been so lucky to have growing enrollment, and some of the enrollment has declined. Every enrollment projection I've seen, to my recollection, has always had us increasing and leveling off, but never necessarily declining. It seems like, though, if you look at the last bar chart, or bar item as well as a line, we may have reached an inflection point in which enrollment may be declining. And I just want to get your thoughts on to what you think as to whether or not enrollment is going to decline, and is declining, or whether or not it's an aberration and is somehow not the trend as it is in many other districts.
I am not Nostradamus. That was a little Greek mythology for Jennifer. So predicting the future is not my specialty. So as a result, we hire people to do that. And, and so, you know, as you know, we did commission, and should be getting the results of, within the next two months, a new 10-year enrollment projection for the district. If you remember, we had MGT of America in December 2010 did a 10-year enrollment projection. And now that they have, you know, sort of three years of actuals under their belt, Mrs. Parks and I are, are working on that actually tomorrow. So we'll get a better handle on it. But really, when you get right down to it, you know, you can see what's going to happen in the, you know, near future by simply looking at who's here now and rolling them up, because we've got a pretty good idea of, of what's happening there. The big question's always what's going to happen in kindergarten. And that's where the demographers earn their money. If they can predict the kindergarten enrollment, then you can really figure out the rest of it by your, by yourself. And that's where the, the math gets very, very tricky, and where they have to be much more sophisticated in doing that. It looks like, you know, if I had to guess, I think we're probably in a leveling off phase. I don't see this going, you know, north forever. But if you look at the enrollment charts that you get every month, you, you look at the, is it second grade now? It's huge. And I, so I think we have 850 kids in second grade. It's like the biggest class in the whole school system. So yes, they're sort of this larger group moving through, and they're sort of hitting the upper end of middle school, and they're going to the high school, and those are probably going to keep growing for a little while. But it doesn't look like it's a slam dunk that the elementary is, is, you know, is in a permanent, permanent decline. So I, I think it's going to be much more level. But I want to wait for the experts to weigh in on that. And I think that that will help us do some future planning, particularly with respect to facilities. And I know that's on our agenda to get to. So we may have had a leveling off time.
Do you mind if she follows up on the enrollment question?
No, I had one too.
Okay.
Well, I guess one thing I noticed is that when we got the January enrollment numbers, that from October 1st to January 1st, we had 20 new elementary students, just in those past few months. And it looked like they were spread kind of all over the place. But still, just the fact that in three months, we've had 20 new students on elementary alone, I thought was notable. You know, just in terms of not being able to predict even once we have the start of the school year, so.
Just for board members, just always remember to keep the microphone fairly close to your face, because it's amazing how only just an inch or two away, and suddenly the public doesn't pick up your voice. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I just wanted to make two requests. When you do get that enrollment projection, can you share it with the rest of the board, so we can see? Also, share-
Oh, absolutely.
And will that be coming in the next week?
Free run at it.
Oh, awesome. Will that be coming in the next, what's the timing of that?
I'll know more tomorrow on that. I think we're looking at February, March timeframe for that. We're trying to get an initial read on it, not the full report, so that Tom can work on his long-range facilities plan that we need to bring back to you, you know, in the near future. So Karen, you remember what the timing is on that? Is that February, March? Is that's the range, right? Yeah.
A reminder to board members, we do get an annual update that is used to drive this year's budget. So we do have, quote, "fresh numbers relative to next year." The one that we're working on right now, I think it was done in 2010.
Yes.
And so it's, it's reasonably current at the moment. And it's that 2010 study that was a 10-year study that we're updating for the next 10 years.
I saw the enrollment projection, I guess, in the budget, that we had retained them, I guess, last year. Is that right?
Yeah, we, we use the same group each year to just do a one-year update for the budget. So that's what kicks off our budget planning, is we get the October 1 numbers, we send them right out to MGT and say, give us an update of your, you know, projection for whatever the year is. And then that gets us going. Periodically, it's good practice to update the 10-year projection.
Right. I thought they had done that last year, just because the number looked higher than prior years. The number that we spent was like 13,500 or something versus a lower number.
We're going to spend more money this year on the enrollment projection, because we're having to do the 10-year. Whereas typically, yeah, the one-year projection isn't that costly. The 10-year ones are much more sophisticated. You get a whole report. So, you know, as soon as we get that and it's ready to be, you know, released, we'll, we'll put it out at a public meeting and take people through it. And I think even one time, if it's, if we want, we've had the people that did it on the phone, and that you can ask them questions on how they did it and their methodology. Because Fairfield's tricky, because we have defied the law of gravity. I mean, as Mr. Fattabene was making reference to, that there has not been a good correlation. Typically, enrollment projections for kindergarten are done by, they look at the birth rate five years prior, and then they look at, you know, how that might translate to your enrollment for kindergarten. And that just has never been a good predictor in Fairfield. It's been completely misleading. And so one of the reasons we, we did an RFP and hired this firm last time was that they had a much more sophisticated model for projecting kindergarten than simply looking at cohort and of births. And they've been pretty good. In fact, this year, I think they were within two of the actual number. They don't get the, each school isn't always right, but in the aggregate, they've been pretty close on that. So we think they've done good work for us, and as soon as we get an update, we'll be sharing it at a public meeting.
And the second part of my question was going back to the world language question. So it's clear that you said this is a two-year ago event. But I'm curious what the cost would be to re-implement the world language, to make it a whole program again? And, you know, how that compares to the cost savings that we, that we realized two years ago?
We'd have to run some numbers on that.
Yes, that's my second request.
Yes, we can get that. There will all come later. We can run that. I'll also say that, just in terms of world, world language, that one of the side effects of the reduction of world language is that that time didn't just go into the ether. The world language time that was released has essentially become more time for English Language Arts in grades four, five, and six. So that if you're implementing world language back to its full event, you've got a cost of the personnel to do that, and you have a cost in time of the English Language Arts program as well. So there were two, two angles.
Which is why, you know, I want to understand what the cost savings were when you first made the decision, and then what the cost of implementation would be to reinstate it. Because it'll be interesting to see what that differential is. And I guess in response to the exchange for world language for English Language Arts, I want to raise this again, because I can't, I guess, in my mind and understanding the way the world is evolving, I think we can't deny that the world is becoming more and more global and competitive. And we are one of the few countries in the world that does not emphasize the need for two languages. And I think that puts our population at a distinct disadvantage in understanding other cultures, in being able to deal with different parts of the world fluently. And I think it's very, very important, actually, that we not neglect that. And I think our language arts, of course, are super important, but you know what? Everybody around the world is also learning our language arts, and they know theirs too. And I think we can't deny that fact.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the income section. I think I promised Mrs. Max and Cannelly the first income question, because she was about to ask it anyways.
I know the question. Right.
Restate the question.
The question is, the sequester, where does it show up? On page 22, it is under, so which is the top half of the page there. Page 22, under federal. Go down to IDEA Part B and IDEA Part B preschool. And Title III, Part A, English Language Acquisition. And Title II, Part A, Teachers' Professional Development Class Size Reduction. Now, you can see in those five lines, or four lines, the year-over-year reduction. The biggest one is IDEA Part B, the non-preschool, which is the basic special education program. So that's about $150,000. The rest of it's relatively small potatoes. But when you're starting with a base of $2 million, that, that hurts. Now, I will say that Congress, for the first time in years, actually just passed a budget. And that supposedly, the sequester has been not, we're not sure what the impact on education is. But evidently, if they didn't do that, this would have gotten even worse. So we are optimistic that we will at least get what's in here. It will take some time to determine whether any of that is actually going to be restored. But that's pretty much where the sequester hits.
Mr. Fattabene.
So these-
Maybe move the mic a little bit closer.
These programs, though, the IDEA, they're only for spending on special education students, is that true?
IDEA Part B is special education. IDEA Part B and IDEA Part B preschool are for special education.
Right.
Title I, II, and III are not.
But the funding's restricted to a certain extent, it's what you can expend it on?
Correct.
And what could you expend those Title II and III on?
Title II is basically a class size reduction grant. So we use it to offset some elementary teachers. You're also allowed to use it for some professional development. It's pretty much restricted to those two areas. And Title III is for English Language learners. So that, that's restricted to that population. The Title I is restricted to those schools designated by the, by their pre-reduced lunch count status. And that's restricted to spending money only on those two schools. In our case, McKinley and Holland Hill. And the Carl Perkins, which actually came up at the last meeting in terms of the, the areas you can spend that on, that has to be spent on basically the tech ed and the, and the career courses. And all of these are, cannot, as they say, supplant existing spending. They have to be supplemental to spending. So you cannot take money from here and exchange it for existing spending. It has to be for something extra.
They're to enhance those existing programs.
Exactly, exactly.
And at federal expense. So the federal, the effort of the federal government is to enhance those existing programs that districts provide, rather than supplanting it and paying for it and let the district not pay for it.
That's correct.
All right, so those, that's like bonus money.
That's correct.
Other income questions. Mr. Patton, and then Mr. Llewellyn.
To follow up on that, so if the money that comes in on the, on at least these particular federal grants, just to stay with that for a second, if it's relatively consistent from year to year, we've lost some because of the sequester in the last year or so, doesn't having consistent money over a certain amount of time kind of make the programs that are using that extra bonus money kind of average every day? So how do you differentiate between extra and going beyond, and then what the program exists as it is?
That's what we get to do in the central office, right? We have to fill out a lot of paperwork, and we have to show and prove that this is supplement, not supplant. And when we have questions about that, we call up our friends at the state, and we say, you know, we got a little extra money in Title I. If we do this with it, would you consider this a plant? Will this work? Because it's a gray area, you know? I mean, realistically, it is. But, you know, what they would, you know, look very much ask at is, you know, if you had, say, $100,000 in your budget for purchases of technology for your tech ed areas at the high school, and then you got a bump of $50,000 in your Carl Perkins money, and then the next year, you reduce the budget for, for those lines to $50,000, they're going to look at that and say, no good. You supplanted. You basically took our 50 and reduced your contribution by 50. And so we constantly have to send data into the state, who sends it into the federal government. And if they think we've supplanted, then they, they get upset. And we have to explain to them what we did. So it's a, it, yeah, it's a, it's a balancing act. But fortunately, generally, year over year, they stay about the same. But what we can't do, for example, is say, okay, let's, Title I. You know, we have, say, three language arts specialists right now at McKinley. We can't take the extra money in Title I and say, great, this means one of them, now we can pay for it out of the grant. Right? We can reduce the operating budget, pay for it out of the grant. No, what they want you to do is add something on top of those three with this, with this money. Doesn't have to be another language arts specialist. But you can't go take existing expenses and offset them with increased grant money, or you run afoul of the supplement, not supplant rule. And we're constantly trying to make sure we stay in compliance with that.
Staying with that example you just gave, can you just give us one brief example on, on, on that to say, to show what the, the grant money, like the Title I?
Sure. So for example, we offer some after-school programming at McKinley, right? That we don't offer in other, in other schools. And we use the Title I funding, you know, for that. So we can show that this is something extra beyond what we do for everybody else in the district for, for that school, using the Title I money. So they'll look at, you know, so that's just an example of it.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Sure. If we move up to the state piece here, where we see public transportation and non-public transportation-
Helpful if you reference the page.
I'm sorry, I'm on page 22.
Same page, right?
Same page, yeah.
The higher up, yep.
So the, the 12.8 goes to 13, excuse me, to 31.4, and then below goes from 3 to 12. What was that increase from 2013 to 2014 attributable to? I'm, I'm in the-
Oh, the public transportation grant?
Correct, and the non-public. Is that a reimbursement of expenses?
It's a formula grant that comes from the state. Doreen, do you know why that moved up?
Doreen, you-
Come up on the microphone.
You'll probably be the go-to person more frequently than other staff, so you might as well stay there in case, so you'll be near a microphone.
It's a formula, so, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a formula, and there's a, a range, a reimbursement. I, I don't know the explanation.
What generally drives the formula? If it went up by, you know, almost three times?
I'm sorry?
What drives the formula? The number went up by three times, that's why I'm curious.
I don't know.
Okay.
We can get you the answer to that question.
It's also possible that the state actually put more money into it.
Okay.
You know, there were some, I have this vague recollection that there was some big pushback on that at the state level, and they dumped some of that national money in there. So it could be more money. The formulas generally are based on the state's, you know, they rank all the towns from 1 to 169 in terms of wealth ranking, that Anglic rating. And generally, the, you know, the wealthier they think you are, the less you, you get. And let's pass through to the town. Now, the town gets that revenue. But at the same time, of course, they took it out of one pocket and put it in another, because they cut the Aid to the Blind grant entirely.
Right, I saw that.
So they, they may really have done that at the state. They might have taken the money out of the Aid to the Blind and moved it into public transportation. That's what it looks like.
And then my next question is in the next section down, the special ed excess cost provision. Why, if our costs are up by 20% this year and projected to go up again, do we not see a bump in the reimbursement? It seems to be flat year over year.
Yeah, it, it only goes up, it goes up- Yeah, it only goes up, it goes up a couple hundred thousand, say, you know, from 12, 13 to the current year. Well, there's several factors with that. One is that in order to qualify to collect that money, unless it's an agency placement by DCF, the only way we even qualify for money is if a placement exceeds four and a half times the per pupil expenditure.
Right.
And that's a pretty big number. So four and a half times is roughly what in our calculations? It's probably $70,000 or something like that. So any placement that, including transportation and, you know, so we put all the costs in, placement might cost $75,000.
Right.
So, yes, we've had to absorb, you know, a lot of that. So some of the placements don't qualify. That's one thing that happens. The second thing is that the state continues to level fund it. And so the percentage of what you're actually entitled to tends to go down because they don't increase the amount. And everybody across the state, their expenses go up by 4%, 5% because that's what these placements cost. And as your per pupil cost inches up, four and a half times inches up. So we do, and I would say, this individual in Andrea's office who does an amazing job with this because not only is she able to get us money for out-of-district placements, but you don't have to have an out-of-district placement to get excess cost provision. So if you've got students in district that are using a lot of resources, and we count everything, right down to the paper they're using, add it all up. Sometimes you can get over the threshold for kids who are actually in district. So we scratched the floor for every nickel on that. But that's what makes that one difficult, is there's several limiting factors in it. And I'll say this again for any of our state reps that are listening, you know, the state reps want to do something that will directly affect and help our budget and the taxpayers would be to fully fund the excess cost provision. Because that cap every year, you know, it's really starting to hurt. And it wasn't that long ago it was fully funded. So that's my sales pitch on the excess cost.
But that looks like it's an opportunity for more savings. Not more savings, for more of a refund because our costs are going up by 40%. We had 17 out placements coming in and our budget's going up by 1,004. So that's averaging over $70,000 a student. So I would think there should be an opportunity there.
Well, you, we're estimating that we'll get some. Now, we filed, right, in December. They have not yet told us what the number's going to be for this year. That first payment's in February. So we'll get our first clue. The other thing is, here's another limiting factor to this. There's so many nuances to this, it's surprising I can remember them all. So Andrea, correct me. Placements that don't go for a full year sometimes will not qualify. So like, we have a placement, the kid starts November 1st.
Right.
And the run rate on that placement maybe is 80,000. But for this fiscal year, you're not going to hit the excess cost.
Right.
Right? The next year, you might, you know, hit the excess cost. So a placement starts in December, you know, those aren't going to qualify. So it's a little frustrating. I feel your pain, believe me. We've usually tried to, you know, recover this, but that's another limitation is the partial year placements. Do I have that right? Amazing.
Mrs., are you finished on that subject? Because Mrs. Lou McCormick has a...
Finished on that and I'll come back.
She wants to follow up on that subject?
Right, just on that thought. So what is the approximate reimbursement that we've seen of late? Is it like 70 or 75%?
75% is our best guess right now. Again, we'll get the news in about a month. Andrea, do you want to amplify? You need a microphone. She's raising her hand very tentatively.
And Andrea, if you want to sit on the other corner, you're welcome to.
I think Doreen ran.
Right.
I got that impression.
I just wanted to make it clear that we start to get reimbursed for every dollar over four and a half times the per pupil.
The first 80 is...
So if we're using, you know, for the purposes of this, it is like a deductible. So I just want to make sure that we don't hit 80 and then we get reimbursed on the whole. We start getting reimbursed for the first dollar after that at 75%.
So what is it, 80 is the cap or isn't it four and a half times?
Four and a half times our per pupil expenditure.
Per pupil expenditure, is that including the special ed students or excluding?
It's four and a half times. The state has a very specific formula for calculating per pupil expenditure.
What is our per pupil expenditure?
Right now, it's approximately $14,500, give or take.
Yep.
It's somewhere in there. So four and a half times that dollar figure is the threshold at which we begin to get reimbursement. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the public.
And only the excess, 75% of the excess gets reimbursed?
That's right.
For members of the public, sometimes people will say, well, here's your total budget. You have 10,000 students, therefore your per pupil expenditure is X. But the State Department of Education has a more complicated formula that they use that then produces a per pupil expenditure that is always slightly different from just the simple math. So if sometimes you hear people saying, oh, it's over 15,000, by one set of math it is, and it's 14 by another set of math. And so don't get confused when you hear two different numbers because it's two different formulas. Did you have a follow-up on that or not?
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Other income questions from the board?
Yes. Does the student transportation on page 26, kindergarten? Where's the remainder of the, that's a revenue, correct?
Well, let me get there.
Sure, sorry. It's the last line item on page 26.
Yeah, that's a revenue, that's our estimated revenue from the preschool that parents pay for.
Okay.
And so we assign that revenue to the transportation account to offset the expenses of providing the transportation to the preschool.
And the transportation expenses where? Just as part of the larger transportation?
Part of the larger transportation budget.
And the total?
This is actually netted off it. So in other words, what you see in the budget for transportation is the net after this is applied.
So we're not seeing gross expenses?
Net budgeting.
Really?
Net budgeting.
And where do we see that down below? Is it in here or is it not seen anywhere in terms of the kindergarten? So what's the total cost of kindergarten busing? Preschool, sorry, preschool.
Preschool busing? We'd have to get that out of, we can get that for you. I mean, we have it when we build the budget, we just don't put it in here. It's, we'll send that out.
Okay, thank you.
It may or may not be fully this amount. It may not, you know...
Wait, so this 135 is income, right?
That's income.
Okay, so this is just an offset against the bigger number, but the net transportation for pre-K isn't necessarily listed individually within this?
That's right.
It's just floating, okay.
Right. We build the, you know, we, again, you know, there's different ways to do the budget. So if you wanted to say, well, how much money are we actually spending? You take the budget number and then you add the revenue to the board on here and add the two together, and that will give you your gross number, more or less. And the state does it when they go calculate per pupil expenditure as well. Grant funds are included in per pupil expenditure. And one little sidebar in per pupil expenditure, so we don't get too far afield, is every town gets backcharged, every Board of Ed gets backcharged by the town for what are called in-kind services. And because that varies all across the state. And so they don't want Boards of Education to get their budgets to look artificially small compared to other boards by, say, having the town pick up expenses. So at the end of every year, the town gives us a figure and says, this is what in-kind is. We report that on our report to the state, and that gets folded into the mix as well. So, for example, here, the town provides nursing services. There's no nursing in our budget, right? And so in another school district, nursing may be in the Board of Ed budget. To equalize that across the state, they don't let you say, well, you know, they'll add back the cost of nursing that was paid by the town into the per pupil expenditure. They try to keep that consistent across the state to the extent that they can. But there's still a lot of wiggle room in there because some towns are much more aggressive about charging back than others, and so there is some bump in there.
Can I ask one more clarifying question on that topic?
Sure.
Yeah, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So on this income number, this income number is actually kind of fungible against any costs within the preschool. So the fact that we netted it against the student transportation, it could also have been netted against the teacher instruction as well.
Sure. Yeah, it could have been.
We just chose to.
That's right.
So I guess my second question would be, can, aside from getting the cost of the pre-K busing, can we also get the total cost of the pre-K programs?
Sure.
And you know where I'm going with this? My third question to top this off is...
Yeah.
A question or a statement?
Question. It's a request for information. How many students on, I guess, what percentage of the students are free lunch that take the pre-K busing?
We've got all that data.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we...
Yeah, what percentage? Yeah, so what percentage of the students taking the pre-K busing are free lunch?
We have three categories. We can, we'll do it in all three categories. Free, we have free, we have half, and full. Those three categories of tuition, right? So I just want to point out, you know, with respect to that program, you know, this is the first year, right, of the Dwight program. And that in order to comply with the racial imbalance law, we were required, and Phil got to have fun with this with me, we were required, the board was required to approve a plan to reduce racial isolation so we could be within compliance of the law. Originally, we had one pre-K program. Part of this was at Burr. And then we weren't making enough progress and we had to go back to the state and tell them what we were going to do, and the pre-K program at Dwight was hatched. And the state board approved that. And so we've, you know, made a commitment to the state board that we will run these programs. Obviously, you want to run them a little while to see whether they work or not. So I think that we have to be careful looking at those programs because it's not just something that we just are doing in town because we felt like it was good. In fact, to be honest with you, if we really wanted to make a real big dent in the achievement gap, we would expand pre-K dramatically for students who couldn't afford it. That would be one of my priorities. Of course, since, anyway, that's a bit far afield. So we have to be careful that we don't mess too much with the pre-K situation because we've got this agreement with the state that we will implement these programs in an effort to reduce racial isolation. That's just background, doesn't...
And...
We'll get you the data, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we can get the data.
Yeah.
The point being that if we didn't do those, we would have to do something else to address the racial imbalance.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
You know what would be nice to know is how successful we've been in addressing the racial imbalance? Have these programs actually done what the intent was?
So that'd be a count of how many students are accounting toward that?
Yeah, whether the number of students that have actually enrolled in it actually stay there.
We actually have a report that we did the year we put the, together, we can, that's an... Yeah, Dwight's new, so we won't have anything on that, but we do have data from Burr.
We can count the kids that are there and know how many.
Right, but see, the whole point here is...
You don't know if they'll stay.
Yeah, it's not...
You know how many you've attracted.
Yeah, we know how many are in the program in the pre-K. The whole deal is, what you need to get is a certain number of four-year-olds. I mean, and, you know, this is just math and it's race and it's uncomfortable to talk this way, but basically you need to get students who are minority students from McKinley to go to the preschool programs at Burr and Dwight and then stay. And we have a track record on Burr about how much, how many that's been. And that has helped. The other thing about this is that in the first year, going back, sometimes you don't, it doesn't do as well because not everybody wants to take the risk of this preschool program all the way across town, because you have to give it a little time. But we did find that helped. And the other thing is, we're very close on the racial imbalance. It only takes a few kids to make it work. You know, you know how it works, right? There's a percentage of K to 5 kids that are minority for the district. No school can be 25 percentage points out of whack with that. The last time we were out of balance, we were off by like 26, 27. We were off by like a percentage point. So really, to get under the number, we really only needed, you know, four kids or, you know, whatever the math was on that. And we did that because last year when we went through it, we were in compliance. Yeah, so it did work. We got out of jail. We don't know this year yet whether we've done it for this year. They don't send us that information until April. I try to get an early read on it, but they're very tight-lipped with the figures. So we will get another report in April and they will say, you're either fine, stay the course, or they'll say, guess what, you backed up over 25. Come back with a new plan of what you're going to do. So it's a work in progress, but it's, we're always teetering right around the edge. And it's a hot topic.
And any other income questions from the board? Mr. Fattabine, followed by Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Patton.
On page 23, other sources. There's sports facilities rental. There's a fairly substantial increase projected. I think, hold on, from 2012, 2013, there's an increase and then it's flat. But I just want to know why the increase from 2012, 2013?
It's the charge we imposed on the students this year for the sports that required a rental.
All right, so that's like...
Sports tax. Sports tax.
Well, the sports facilities rental, we're not renting our facilities.
Correct.
We're getting an income based on students paying a fee to use the facility.
Correct.
All right, just that sports facility rental confused me. I thought we were renting out to someone else.
Oh, I see, I see. Well, we do that too.
But that's not this number.
That's not that number.
Right.
That number is building rentals.
Right, so this number is the revenue received from students participating in our sports programs.
Correct, exactly.
Which always bothers me. As does this next number, parking fee.
Right.
That is the money coming in from high school students...
The park.
Being able to park at our...
Their high school.
That's correct.
Facilities.
There you go, that's it. Exactly what it is. And you remember that part of the budget cut, or budget adjustment in the vernacular, was some revenue enhancing, so we didn't have to cut...
Right, no, I understand.
Programs. And so we increased it. The reason that goes up while you're on that line...
Right.
Is that we used to charge $100 a year for parking in 12, 13, and that was increased to $150 a year this year. And so that's why the estimated revenue is up.
Are we charging employees as well?
Employees?
Yeah, because we're charging the students, so... But you know what? If I'm a student, I'd say the same thing. You've got to be kidding, right?
Mrs. Cannelly? I'd like to go to Mrs. Gerber next and then Mr. Patton. That answered your question, Mr. Fattabine?
It answered the question.
Did you have other?
I'd like maybe the follow-up question would be...
Okay, please ask a follow-up.
Is there any... I'm making it a generalized format now, in a sense. You know, obviously, we had some cuts last year. And that's where some of this increased revenue from the sports activities as well as the parking fees arose. And I see it still in this budget. Obviously, we didn't want to decide to not do that and absorb those fees again in the budget so that the students don't have to pay for sports. Now, I may advocate that that may be done, but are there any other items in this budget which were cut from last year that have been inserted back into this budget to reinstate program that we eliminated last budget cycle?
No, so these in particular, we're maintaining the status quo in the next budget. So we're not increasing the parking fee. We're not expanding the sports charges.
Right.
We're staying the course. We're also not reverting back to zero. Now, I don't think there's anything in the budget that was cut last year that has been put back into this budget.
Right. All right, that's my, I just wanted to clarify that. And obviously, the last two budget cycles, actually, we had fairly substantial cuts.
Two out of three.
In eliminating certain program that we offered.
Yeah, there's one year where we really had a minor, a minor cut, I would call it. It's in here, the two budgets ago.
Mr. Patton? And then, no, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Yeah, also, under other sources, the custodial fees. The, there's the increase, and then there's more of an increase projected. Does this include the PTA and other organizations that were formerly exempt now being charged?
Yeah, that includes several adjustments that were made this year. It includes the, the exempt groups now paying. That's also part of it. But we also increased some fees on some other users as well because we used to have some discounts for, say, employees who wanted to run a camp on the athletic fields. And the rate was really low and we eliminated that discount or severely curtailed it. So, there also was a, just a general increase in the rates that, that's also part of that. But that's what that increase is attributable to, yes.
But now, I know that there was some talk about reducing with the, on the PTA side, so is that factored into this?
All I've done on the PTA side for now is, because of all the confusion around the fees on the weeknights, we had said last year that that if you held your event on a weeknight and got out of there by 11 o'clock, you wouldn't incur a charge. So I recently sent a, a letter to the, to the PTA president telling him that we would no longer assess those charges going forward. But that the overtime for the weekends or after 11 o'clock would still be in effect because we need that revenue to balance out our budget. So we have, we've loosened the reins on that a bit and we'll see how that plays out for the rest of the year. We are seeing a little uptick in the rentals from outside groups that now we get to keep the, the building rentals piece. So we believe that that will be able to cover the offset that the PTAs would have paid. So now they can have some cost certainty about. If I hold an event on Friday night from 7 to 11, there's not going to be, you know, extra charges. So we did, we did do that. But there's no change in terms of if they run an event on a weekend, that there's a.
Right, but the weeknight before 11.
The night before 11 is clean now. Yeah, that's, that's all straightened out.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if it's all straightened out, but it's, it's clear how it works, right? So that, because the administrative regulations and all the groups, you know, we are required still to add custodial services on those nights. So if an event comes in and there's 300 people, the custodian needs to call somebody in because someone's got to clean the building while somebody else is working the event or cleaning the cafeteria. So we're still going to incur those charges. It's just that the PTAs will not be charged for those.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I think Mr. Patton was next and then Mrs. Lou McCormick on income.
Keeping with the, the custodial fees topic, what was, one of my questions, and I know you didn't have a chance to, to research this information, but if you, or do you know off the top of your head the difference in, in fees between either 1213 to 1314 or projected forward between the amount of money we get from PTAs versus the amount of money we're getting from everybody else in that line item? Any idea what the rough PTA fee is?
You mean, in terms of like this year, what we've.
Well, I guess that's all the data you have so far is up to this point.
Right, it's part through this year. We'll have to send that out.
Okay.
Off the top of my head. You know, I think that, remember, some of the PTAs, knowing this, have adjusted their events so that when they were completely exempt, they might have had more events on the weekends and they moved some of those to weeknights to avoid it. So, we didn't particularly care either way because we avoid the overtime costs if the events are during the week. And that won't show up as a charge because they move the event. Or if they do have it on the weekend and we incur the expenses, then, you know, we get reimbursed for it. So it could be that the projected revenue on that may not be what we thought, but it's still going to have the same positive effect on the custodial overtime budget, which was the whole point of it. So. Think we'd have to go back to 1213 to see when it was free, you know, the, the cost of the board for that was, you know, pretty penny, so. We have to, we have to dig up some research on what we've collected in fees and who's been paying it.
So we can research that and get back to you?
Yeah.
Did you have another question?
I have another question.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, and then we'll go back to Mr. Patton.
I, I realize, this is a request. And since the requests all seem related, I'm going to aggregate the request into one as opposed to continually asking the same request over and over and over again. Because I just asked the request about the cost of world language, of re-implementing, and then what the cost savings was two years ago. Let me just, let me broaden that question to, is it possible to get a list of all of the student, direct student program or event changes? That includes charges that students now see that they didn't see before, as well as programs that they used to have that have now been cut, or events that have been cut, to see what the cost savings were, let's just say for the last three years, and what it would be to re-implement them?
We, we do have.
I just want to broaden that, just so I don't have to keep asking it over and over.
Let me see if this, when the 2.8 million and some change of cuts were made, there was a very specific list that indicated the program or the administrative car, item or the capital item that said, here's the service delivery reduction and here's how much we saved. The year that we did the 250, that was able to be absorbed, just, I'll say administratively, so we don't have that list. Last year, we do have a list that shows how the million dollars was taken out of the budget showing the service delivery reduction program and others, and the amount of money that's spent. Is that what you're trying to get to?
Kind of, that's one side of it. So that shows, so if we could get like a clean list of all this direct student charges and program impact with the cost savings that you realized at that time, but the other line is what the cost would be to re-implement it now.
But, the first one's easy.
Yeah.
We have the list of cuts because every year the board had to approve it and you can go through it and you can see it.
Estimates are good enough, but I mean, it's always easier to cut than it is to re-implement, right? But it would be nice to see if it's approximately the same, because not that much time has changed.
Right, but I think that if you've got a specific, if you've got a specific reduction that you would like to see reinstated, we can cost that out. But to cost out every single reduction that was made and what it would cost to reverse it would seem to be a lot of tail chasing. So, I really would like to try to minimize that.
We could do it in two, two, maybe we do it in two steps. We first just get the list of the items.
Right.
And then from that, we'll pick from there and see if you can do the.
Yeah, if you want to try to.
We didn't have much time, so we only have a week. So I wanted to see if I could just tell you what I'm going for. So if you can estimate it now, let's just do it.
Right, I mean, rather, you know, if you're, and I think that, you know, and Mr. Dwyer had said this before, if you're considering an adjustment to this budget, and that could be an add or a subtract.
Right.
The earlier you tell us what you're thinking about, the more accurate we can be on costing that out. So if there were specific items, like when you say, what would it cost to reinstate world language? That's a very doable, you know, you know, bite-sized chunk that we can come up with that number fairly, fairly quickly. But to do all of them.
No, we don't have to, I want to see the list though, because I can't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send the list out.
Right.
We'll send the list out. And I, I think the point that Dr. Title is also making is that, so if you just take those two years, 3.8 million dollars worth of service reductions, and I say it that way because administrative reductions also lead to service reductions as well as program. And when you cut a technology capital budget, that ultimately leads to a service reduction somehow. It's capital, yes, but it's a service reduction. That to try and cost out 3.8 million dollars worth of service reductions when you know there isn't a real good chance of having that be able to be just put back in, so costing out specific ideas that the board would like to advance is a lot easier than trying to do just everything across the board.
We can do it that way, just starting with the list and then we'll select.
Get that to you.
That's doable.
Where was I with hands on income? Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Fattabean?
Again, in, in my list of questions that I know the central office hasn't had time to get to everything yet. Page 24, 25. For, I guess, these pages are basically the expenditures based on the state grant or federal grant funds, correct?
Yeah, this is where we assign the money.
Right, so. Right, so for example, in 5105 for excess costs, you know, the revenue is, is roughly the same, but the, the categories where the money has been expensed in have kind of bumped around a bit. So there are reductions in capital outlay and instructional materials, but there are increases in other areas. So I guess my, my question before was, is that something that happens pretty much on a yearly basis where things jump around or on a need-to-need basis?
I think what we've tried to do, and we inherited where all of these grants were being spent, some of them were spread out over awful lot of line items. And there's no requirement to do that. And it just made it really difficult to keep track of. It has no effect on the bottom line. So I think what we just did there is we took some of the smaller ones and aggregated them up into some of the bigger lines, just to make it easier to track. But when you've got a grant of 2.8 million dollars and you've got, you know, 1,900 in this line and 1,700 in this line, it just is unnecessary, you know, bookkeeping to, to do that. So really, all it's, all that is, is, is cleaning up and making it simpler to administer and keep track of, but it really has no effect on anything.
Okay, so you're, as I was, like you had said previously, you've got to follow the rules and figure out what you can use the money for and what's excess and what's not. So basically, as long as the excess items were approved and there could be larger amounts, it's just easier to reallocate the funds to the larger items for simplicity, for bookkeeping sense.
Right, and it's, it's one of these things where you're, you know, the excess cost needs to be spent on, you know, what, what the excess costs are attributable to. So you'll see the big bulk of the excess cost goes to tuition, because that's, that's quite a bit of it. But we also have to hire some additional staff for certain students who qualify. And so their, their salary, or their benefits are, are included in there, or they might be pupil personnel services and other services that students need that are driving the excess cost. So you do have to line it up somewhat. We know that like transporting kids to out-of-district placements, that's a cause of excess cost. And so we net some of it there. So you have to keep it, you know, related to the expenses, but you've got leeway here. And, you know, in terms of bottom line to the budget, I mean, you, you literally could take the whole thing and put it in tuition. But if you make big changes year to year in that, then what happens is your regular budget gets a little wacky. And people say, oh, how come the specialized tuition is going down a lot? And we have to say, well, because we're putting more grant money into it. So we try to keep it relatively constant. So year to year, the, the budget doesn't move around a lot on, in those line items. But really, that's just, that's just a lot of cleanup work, is all that is.
And on 5235, the, the individual disabilities, IDA part B for health insurance and pupil services, that, that's the same kind of thing, because those kind of were, jumped out at me that, that those numbers in particular would have changed as opposed to other random stuff.
Well, there, that, that particular one, again, the, some of the smaller ones were, were taken out. And also, we had to make some reductions there, so they just got moved into, you know, into fewer categories, that's all.
Okay.
Just a clarification on that?
Fattabean, do you mind? You want to follow up?
I just want to follow up a clarification on that.
Yeah, Mr. Lou.
So, so Dr. Title, basically, the estimated expenditure column is how you're allocating it, but that's not necessarily related to what the actual expense incurred is. If I follow up, because if, if we go back to the bus concept in kindergarten, the student transportation, preschool, preschool, sorry, is 133.
Right.
Is the revenue, but we know that the busing is north of 200.
It may be higher than that, right. So it's just an offset against it. It may not cover the full cost. Right.
So it's not the estimated expenditure, it's the allocation?
What's that?
It's an allocation, not an estimated expenditure.
It's an allocation against that.
Okay.
But it doesn't necessarily cover the full cost.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Mr. Fattabean?
Thank you. I have two questions unrelated. The first one would be on page 25, where stick with the IDA part B. Line, it's, it's 5235, line item 113 per professional staff. It just seems curious to me that the, that the 1314 budget had 41.7. The proposed budget has 1415 has 36.2. But yet, it's a fairly substantial increase in expenses. Now, I, I guess they're getting paid more per per person now? Or, I don't know what the substantial increase in expense when you're reducing the number of people. I mean, it's just an aberration. There's probably an answer for it, I don't know what it is, but it seems unusual.
Yeah, I don't know.
Alright, no, I just wanted to point that out.
A quirk. Yeah. You know, sometimes it depends on who's in there.
And maybe you get a stipend. Wasn't there a stipend?
Yeah, there's some, there are some, some that get stipends.
Other activities that were outside the normal course of.
Yeah, there's some.
Should do?
Yes, there are. And it also could be, you know, which people we have in there because it's a wage scale, so.
Yeah, it just seemed unusual.
Yeah. It all nets out to the same number in the end, so.
The next question is, relates to revenue, but really lack thereof, in the sense that it relates to the food service reimbursement. I noticed that the food service reimbursement is $204,000 less because primarily we're doing an RFP, request for proposal, to contract out those services. So my question would be, in that request for proposal, would there be a provision in there in which we recoup that revenue?
That's a, that, that will be in the bids. In other words, we do have, for example, one of the requirements in the bid is that there still needs to be some secretarial support here for the food service program even once it's outsourced. And so we put that into the bid that they need to include that when they're, when they're coming forward. But really, that's up to the vendors because they can propose, you know, any arrangement they want financially. They could say, you know, we're going to do a profit sharing arrangement and if we make X dollars, then you get 50% of it. Or they can say, you know, the first 100,000 of profit goes to you and we get to keep the rest. I mean, this is all something that could be worked out in the bid process, so. We have to wait and see what the financial arrangements are from the vendors to see. But there's no requirement that they offer up $200,000 to us. We have to see what they do when they bid.
Are we almost done with income? Because I'd like to move on to the executive summary and start going through those object lines, but do you have an income question?
Just a quick follow-up to that, that was another one of my questions. Thank you, Mr. Fattabean, for jumping ahead of me. So, again, for clarification, the custodial staff budget of $110,000 that we will now have to cover. So, that's not necessarily a specific thing that's going to be in an RFP. We would just, we, we're going to have to eat this $200,000. It's just how much we would possibly, if anything, get back.
Right, it, it's, we, we, and, and it's really unclear that the program actually can afford that anyways. You know, for a long time, those expenses were not part of the food service budget. It was only after the audit and they saw this huge balance in there that they said, hey, look, you guys should collect another 150 grand a year from this program. So, my guess would be that even if we didn't outsource this program next year, that thing would go down to zero. Because to keep the program afloat, they're just not going to be able to, you know, pay utility expenses and this sort of thing. And they, and they didn't for years and years and years. So temporarily, we're able to do it, but going forward, I don't think we would have it anyway. And what, one of the big things the RFP will do is we'll limit our downside risk. Because, you know, all, you know, we hope that, you know, all of the vendors will come in and basically hold us harmless with respect to any deficit they may, they may incur as they ramp the program up. So really, this is, you know, financially puts a backstop on the, on the bleeding there.
So let's move on to the executive summary. We do have food service on the agenda as a separate item, so if there are other follow-up questions people want to ask, we can do it when we get to that gender item. Question, do you have any comments that you want to make on the executive summary?
No, go for it.
Okay. Who's up for questions on the executive summary? What we have normally done for the benefit of the new board members is we just go through the object sections, salaries, benefits, instructional services, just page by page. So if you have questions.
I have one.
Fire away.
This is Lou McCormick.
Okay, so on the transportation, I just wanted to find out about the fuel costs. I understand that we strip the fuel costs out separate from the contracts, correct? So are they now reflected in transportation still or are they reflected elsewhere?
No, they're in the transportation budget. It's just when we build the transportation budget, we build a separate line in the budget for fuel costs segregated out from the contract costs. And so we're given a. And so we're given an estimate from the town about the, you know, the town does the purchasing of the fuel for us. So we know, we have an estimate on how much per gallon we should budget for the diesel fuel. The difficulty that we continue, you know, is that in this transition, we have only maybe three months' worth of experience about how much fuel we actually use. So we're still in estimation mode in terms of the gallonage. After this year is concluded, and we've had a full year, and we know, you know, once all the field trips are done and all of the athletic events and everything that happens during the year, and we can get an actual on the fuel, then we can be a little more certain about that. But it's all included in that one number in the transportation budget.
This is another request, would you be able to just give us the estimate of?
Gallons?
Gallons, based on the one quarter, and break, just break out the fuel versus the rest of the transportation?
We have that segregated. John has got it down.
And the budget?
The world's biggest spreadsheet.
Yeah, and this year's budget was based on the cost per gallon provided by the town and the number of gallons for what we thought might be a year round, yeah.
Right.
So we do have a year, a total year budget, and we have a three months actual against that.
They not even have three months. They're very slow at billing us on that.
Two months.
Right.
Right?
I mean, how, what do we have on that? Couple months, maybe, of fuel? And the other thing is, and again, this is take a while to figure out, is because we're making the fleet newer as part of this contract, a substantial number of new vehicles were purchased this year, you might have noticed them, they're the larger ones that get stuck under the bridges. That next year, since budget humor time, I believe there's even more new ones coming on next year. And the new buses are more fuel efficient than the old buses. So we're hoping that, you know, our gallonage this year, you know, will be an indication with a fleet of a certain vintage, but that we would hope that our gallonage could decline if more fuel efficient buses come on, because the newer ones do get slightly better gas mileage. I mean, it's, they're not a Prius. Yeah.
Or a hybrid.
And of that breakout of the fuel, could I also ask for the detail of breaking out the, what your estimates for the three months is for the pre-K and the special ed busing? Because I think those are two different busing than the big buses, they're probably different little buses, right?
I don't know about that. We don't break that out. The special ed, special ed is different. You can break that out, you know, the special ed, go ahead, Doreen.
We have buses that, you know, do runs and they may, one run may be a special ed run, one run may be a preschool run. I mean, there's, John?
Is it the same bus?
Right.
Oh, it's the same little bus?
Right, so there's no way of determining, and our big buses do non-public as well as public. So there's no way of determining, you know, how many gallons a bus actually uses. We just, for budget purposes, allocate it based on the number of buses for special ed versus?
So I guess the way I would look at it then is if you could figure out how much a bus approximately, like the fuel usage per bus, and then tell me how many buses are used in each program. That's another way of estimating.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Whatever you can do, you know, something close enough, this is an estimate, this is not like rocket science. I'm just trying to get an approximation. Because what we're doing is comparing the new costing versus the old method that we had. So you kind of want to see if in fact we're saving, how much we're saving, right? And what the allocation is, so that if we made a change to one of the programs, how much in total we'd be saving by making a change to the transportation? That's what I'm trying to understand.
That's an easier question to answer. If we did X, how much would we save? That's easier to estimate than the other way around.
But those are the, so those are the two areas, so I need to understand the fuel that's associated with the transport.
So sometimes the, we can get you that answer. Right now, you've heard, we're not sure we can get you that answer, but we'll look at it.
We'll try, right, there you go.
Other questions on the executive summary?
While we're on busing, if I may, the same number of buses were budgeted, but the configuration of tiers has changed. What does that mean? So our costs are up by, I'm sorry, I'm on page 41 following on the busing. I'm assuming executive summary is those 10 pages, not just the first, okay. So, but the overall budget has increased by over 5%, yet we went to a newer fleet, we're taking fuel, and we don't have the double busing of the grandfathered kids. I don't quite understand why we're going up rather than down.
Right, so the grandfathering is not a change. So the current year, there's no grandfathering, and next year, there's no grandfathering. So that doesn't, there's no savings there, the savings was already?
It was this year.
It was this year.
Okay, thank you.
So that has nothing to do with it. The buses, right, we use the same number of buses, but depending on where the kids are, we might use a bus for one, two, or three runs a day. And so if you use the same bus, but you run three tiers instead of one tier, it costs you more. It doesn't cost you triple, there's an economy of scale here. But there's a price in the contract for, if we own a bus and we run it, one run a day, one tier a day, that's a price. If we run it two tiers, there's another price, and three tiers is another price. So depending on what John has to do to make the routes work, he may have to increase the number of runs a given bus makes to accommodate changes in the transportation.
And for clarification, whenever Dr. Tittle says run, and whenever he says tier, it's the same thing?
Right, the same thing. So really, what you have is, you know, in this, the special education transportation is a considerable part of this. And the, you know, 2.5% against the $7 million number is really the rest of it. The tier changes matter somewhat, but the, you know, 2.5% is, you know, it's about 150 of that, and then the special ed costs are a couple hundred thousand, and maybe the tiers are the rest of it. So that's really, the fuel is really a non, not a factor at this point, because we're pretty much budgeting fuel the way we did for the current year, because we have so few months of experience. So that's really the breakdown there. Probably the biggest, probably the biggest fraction of that increase is special ed transportation.
Okay, and you're going to break that anyway for Eileen's other request, right? You're going to break this between the different categories?
Yeah, we can budget, we can break out the increase based on those three factors.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions on the executive summary, Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I was going to start with the staff salaries, page 33. I just had a question, the 111 secretarial staff, clerical staff. I know the question comes up every year, just in terms of, you know, that's kind of a generic term. And, you know, is there a way to kind of get more specificity in terms of? I thought that there was something that we got last year in the budget, and I went back and I couldn't find it. I just thought it might be helpful moving forward, because the question always gets asked. And just to have, you know, because I know that there are a lot of different responsibilities that these different people have, and to be able to really fully understand what they are, I think would be really helpful for everyone.
Yeah, I think in the, in one of the Q and A documents, not the Board of Ed minutes, but in the Q and A documents, it might have been in the one that I passed out at the last meeting.
Was it there?
I think that's where it was, right?
Oh, okay, thanks.
Right, that explains by department what they're doing. And also, I think that if we haven't already, and I know it was posted by HR, the job descriptions for everybody were posted. They're on the website.
But not under the budget, they're just?
They may not be under the budget.
Under HR on the website?
Under HR, so we can move it over to the budget section, it's not a problem, we can put it all in one place.
Just as long as people know where to find it, because I just know, you know, the question comes up, and it would just be helpful to be able to say, go exactly here and get the information there, just to?
So remember, because there were people saying, you know, what do you mean, there's nine secretaries in the business office? When in fact, you know, there might actually be one person who does secretarial work, and the others are accounts payable, or?
Right, but when you just look at it here in the book, it jumps out at you. And if you could just have more specificity or place to point people in, that would be helpful.
So I think that Q and A may have it in there. Doreen, did you want to jump in on this?
Yeah, and the detailed report, we did break out some, wherever we could, we broke out and redefined, better defined, what everyone's job category was.
I think in pages 140 to 147, actually, you broke out all the different secretarial clericals.
Is that what you mean, Doreen, is that where it is, Doreen?
No, in the, in the section that says budget detail by object. It starts page 53.
It's page 60, I think, is that what you're talking about? The secretarial clerical staff, and then it goes through each school?
Page 62, I think.
Right.
Yeah, 62.
61, 62. Right, and 60, like halfway, halfway on 60, 111.
Right, right. That's it, but I think the Q and A may have even more detail.
Right, that's what I was looking for, is not just listing it, but just to kind of get a better sense of, you know, that there are differentiations between the different roles, that's all.
Thank you.
Right.
Other questions on the executive summary? It might be helpful if we started from the beginning of staff, go through benefits, so that we're not constantly flipping back and forth from the beginning to the end of the section.
Come on, I kind of like that.
You like that, huh?
It's budget jeopardy.
Mr. Patton, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I was just about to make that suggestion. Page 33, 113, that's the one thing that I couldn't find in the handy handout from last meeting for paraprofessional staff. And I don't know if this was mentioned before. So we've added additional 9.2 full-time employees for paraprofessionals, of which four were already existing that we are losing the funding for because we are not getting the grant money for those. So there's 5.2 left.
Correct, so there's actually 5.2 positions, actual human beings being added. But the budget reflects 9.2, because four of the existing people's grant has, won't cover their salaries.
Right, that I understand. So my question is, do you know where the 5.2 employees are, what areas those are in?
Yes, we do. Come on up, it's actually, in all the staffing, Andrea can give you more specificity, but there is a page that shows all the plusing and minusing on the staffing to the hundredth in the support section. But Andrea can go more specifically, because a lot of these are specifically designated for a particular school. And it should show up in the school reports, too, in the, maybe that same place that, I'll look for that while you answer the question.
They do, they're all related to individual student needs. Each and every one of the 5.2 is related to an individual student need for a student anywhere in the pre-K-12 continuum. We need 5.2, they're not all for, it's not all 1.0 for a student, although some are. But there are pieces that all go along with individual student needs. Some students moving into the community, into our 18 to 21-year-old program, require some additional services, job coaching services. We have students moving into the middle level, who now are, who may be at elementary currently sharing paraprofessional support. But when they move into the middle or the high school level and start to specialize into coursework, they can no longer share support, so they need individual support. So it's a series of pieces of paraprofessional parts, part-time, that equate to 5.2 across the district.
Okay, so it's not obviously just, you know, elementary for, you know?
No, they're at all levels.
Did you say there was a page that kind of broke that?
Yeah, it's, actually, you can see it in the staffing by school department, which starts on page 140. You actually can see there the comparison from the actual to the budget in each of the major categories. So if you're just interested in paraprofessionals, you can look across the total line. And you'll also see in some cases, we have reduced.
Right.
I mean, if a student moves from one level to another, we, you know, we reduce the paraprofessional there and add it elsewhere. So it's a constant reallocation, we don't just add, in some cases, we subtract. So that's where you'd see it, school by school, where the paraprofessionals are allocated, as well as everybody else. But that's where you would see it, let me pick off an example.
Can I ask another question?
Just to point out, like Riverfield as an example, 7.9 paraprofessional staff in 1314, 8.4 next year. Just have to look at the total column. We break it out by grant and Board of Ed, but it's the total bodies there, so that's where you can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So how do you decide, like, is it a PPT requirement? So it's written in there and says, oh, now we require a point two or one, or how does that work?
The PPT doesn't necessarily assign the FTE.
And for the benefit of, maybe some people don't know alphabet soup out in the audience.
The planning and placement team, which is the team that determines a student's individual education plan, really identifies the nature of the support necessary. So for example, a planning and placement team may determine that a student requires paraprofessional support in academic classes that require a level of focus and attention. And then we would take that recommendation, determine what those classes are, and how much FTE would be necessary in order to determine that. We would also determine whether or not a student could, again, share resources. So for example, in an elementary school, you may have two students who are placed in the same classroom, and then they share a resource that goes into the classroom. At the secondary level, that becomes a little more complicated as students specialize into courses. So that's a little less, becomes less likely. And then certainly, you know, the more specialized a student becomes in terms of their need. But the planning and placement team is really the team that drives individual student needs for special education.
Do they ever require that you have a paraprofessional?
Sometimes.
They do, and when they do, it's required, correct?
Once it is determined by a PPT that that's the student's need, then we have to provide that service.
But if they don't require it, then it's discretionary?
If they don't require it, you don't provide it?
Right, if they don't require it, then we don't provide it.
Oh, oh, so, okay, so it is, it's, we would only provide it if it was required in the PPT?
For special edu, for individual special education paraprofessionals, yes.
Okay, so that's what these five point, whatever, increases is?
These are all PPT required. To students with special needs identified by their planning and placement team, yes.
Other questions in the executive summary, Mr. Fattabine?
I just want to follow up on that just slightly. So it's my understanding, though, that there are paraprofessionals that aren't specifically designated or service special ed students as well?
Yes.
Right, that's what I thought. So these increases are not increasing, are only the 5.2 for supporting special ed students, not an increase in the overall population of paraprofessionals used within the classroom or to have other instructional aspects with non-special ed students.
Correct.
All right. My recollection was in the past, I thought we had made sort of a policy decision that we would utilize less paraprofessionals within the classroom for just regular students and get more certified staff. And then there was a reduction in the number of paraprofessionals, a number of, maybe on the last year, two years ago, they all blend together, but last year?
It was on the special ed side, though.
It wasn't?
Well, it was on the special ed side and it was on the regular ed side, there's formulas for that. But the big change in terms of trading off paraprofessionals versus certified was on the special ed side. That's, you're recalling that.
All right.
But it doesn't mean that, and, you know, it's funny, because this is the very same discussion I have with the principals when these requests come in. Because principals would love to have even more paraprofessionals. And one of the discussions we have and had was, look, folks, we're not doing both. You made a trade, and we're not going to have the extra certified staff, and then slowly inch up on the paras, so we end up with double.
Right, that was my concern.
So we don't. So this is very specific for individual student needs, because the formula that we use to allocate paraprofessionals does indicate that obviously if a student requires a one-on-one, that's going to be provided, because we have to be in compliance with the PPT. So these are all for that purpose, they are not general purpose, special ed paraprofessional. So you're right on, we made an instructional decision and budgeting decision to go that way, and we're staying with it. And the principals are painfully aware of that.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Anna doesn't even want to make eye contact with me. That's right, right. The elementary principal, Mr. Chase is back there, he knows.
Mr. Llewellyn.
Line 131, why do we have a 30% increase in the wage benefit reserve? And we have, in the most recent financials that were provided, I believe it was at the last meeting, we actually are appropriating money away from that budget line downward, and now we're going up.
The wage and benefit reserve is a complex topic. And so when we do this, we have a lot of unsettled contracts. And so, when we do this, we have a lot of unsettled contracts. And so, we have to continuously put money into the wage and benefit reserve till those contracts are settled. So, I think we have an extra one now that's not settled that we're currently on a contract for. I think it's the secretaries that is, that currently is, they're in a contract, and starting next year, they won't have a contract. And so, any raises for them have to be put into the wage and benefit reserve, whereas this year, they are in the regular budget. Doreen, if you want to make any other comments on the wage and benefit reserve, obviously, we don't get into the specifics about what percentage we're putting into there because we don't want to disclose that in terms of any negotiations that's upcoming. But, Doreen, do you want to tackle that? That's pretty much?
That's pretty much it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you won't provide the breakdown, and that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, we try to keep that off the radar because we don't want to have people figure out what we're budgeting for increases going forward. But it's all the, you know, it's anyone who's, I think we do identify in here, in, through the executive summary, where there's no wage increase and the wage increases are budgeted in the, in the wage and benefit reserve. We do say which, which contracts are in there.
Right. But the, the reserve is based on contractual amounts?
It's, it's based on any contract that's unsettled. What we estimate, the, when the contract does settle, what we're going to owe. And the longer they go, the bigger that has to get. Is retroactive.
Right.
And, uh,
Two million dollars is why I ask.
And, and generally, when we get into this area, we have generally held an executive session at some point to talk about our negotiating stance where the more detailed questions that you might be thinking of asking would be more appropriate.
Okay, fair enough.
Other questions that people have on the salaries? If not, we'll move on to the benefits?
Can I just go back to the paras? One more question on that.
On the salaries, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear that the total FTEs for paras is, is that, it's up by nine? Did, did I read that correct?
The total FTEs of the paras that we have to budget for is nine point two.
And of those nine point two, how many were the special ed paras? Was it five?
Five point two.
Five point two, so there's an extra?
They're all special ed paras.
Oh, all nine point two?
Yes, because the four FTEs were currently funded by the special ed grant. So, those four special ed paras that have been paid out of the grant, now we have to move their wages into the general fund. So, all of the paraprofessionals that we're talking about in that particular area are special education.
Okay, so the full increase of the paras is special ed, PPT required?
It's a five point two increase, PPT required.
New.
New, for existing, no grant money to pay for them.
I see. And then there was a transfer of the balance from grant to?
Correct, exactly, exactly, right.
Other questions on salaries? Mr. Patton?
Just a quick one on line one fifteen on page thirty-three for custodial staff. Does that amount reflect the contract that is, that we just approved? Is that?
Custodians aren't settled.
They're not settled yet?
No.
Okay.
But I think the question that we, just at our last meeting, did approve two contracts. Those contracts, because of other issues, have to go to the RTM on one question. So, is it fair to assume that that money is still in the wage and benefit reserve?
It's in the wage and benefit reserve.
That's more my question.
They're all in the wage and benefit reserve because at the time we did the budget, they were unsettled contracts. We had no idea what the increase would be. So, what will happen is, depending on when we want to do this, that we would actually move that money out of the wage and benefit reserve and assign it to the employees. Just a matter of timing for that.
Okay, 'cause in your explanation, it said because of the shifting of the funds between the wage and benefit reserved and, and the budget. So, that's why I wanted to know if that reflected that amount, or if that was going to change again when the final approval comes.
It won't change the salary account. Our budgeting for those increases in the wage and benefit reserve was pretty accurate, so it's not gonna have any impact on the budget. It's just a question of whether it goes in wage benefit reserve or whether it gets assigned up to, say, info tech support staff, which right now shows zero. Right, if you look up at info tech support staff one twenty-three, you'll see year over year, there's zero budgeted.
Right.
Right, because it was an unsettled contract. Now, the contract gets settled, and we'll go, now we'll go assign those, that money out of the wage and benefit reserve and into their account.
Okay, understood.
Other salary questions? If not, we'll go on to benefits. Salary question?
Yeah, one more. In your assumption for staff replacement, four hundred and sixty, what are you, what are your assumptions there on number and average?
Yeah, so, we actually carry three different staff replacement numbers. Two sit by themselves out in this realm, and one is factored into the actual line. Because this question always comes up. I'm gonna expand a bit because this question comes up every year.
Right.
So, I might as well answer it now, even though you didn't precisely ask it. So, for retirements, let's, let's cover that first.
Yep.
We make an assumption about a certain number of retirements that will occur based on the historical averages. In the current year, we budgeted for sixteen retirements, and the actual number turned out to be eighteen. Next year, we're, we're budgeting for another sixteen. And what we do there is, we actually go into the salary accounts for teachers and reduce sixteen individual teacher accounts by thirty-five thousand dollars apiece. And that becomes our number. So, that's baked into the one-on-one line already. It doesn't sit out as a separate line. Obviously, if we're off, then it can be, you know, a problem, or it can be a benefit to us. So, that's how we do, how we do that one. On the staff replacement, we have two parts to that. One is certified staff replacement, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's based on a historical average of what that's been. That is not retirement. So, that is individuals who leave the district for any reason, are replaced by a less senior person. It could be somebody who goes off on a leave of absence, and their replacement makes less money than them. It could be a whole variety of reasons related to turnover. So, that's, that's how that one comes, comes into being. And the hundred and ten thousand is actually new this year. And this helps offset the loss of the lunch program money, because it's actually the same number. That used to include, the current year includes a hundred and, actually includes a hundred and ten thousand dollars of money from the, that the lunch program is reimbursing us. But going forward, that is to account for a hundred and ten thousand dollars in non-certified staff turnover. They've never budgeted for non-certified staff turnover. Any savings related to non-certified staff have been, you know, something that accrued to us, and if we were over somewhere else, this would help, help out for that. So, this would be, you know, in the event that there's a retirement, or if there's turnover on the non-certified side. And that's, again, this is our first time doing that. It's a bit of a risk, but we looked at the history there, and we've generally gotten in about that, in about that range. So, those are the three pieces.
So, a hundred and ten is the non-certified, and then you've got three fifty for staff?
For certified.
Certified staff, and then you, on top of that, have sixteen retirees at thirty-five each. It's a lot, okay?
Right. And, you know, this has been one of those things that's, every year's a discussion with the other town bodies because, you know, are you under-budgeting that, over-budgeting that? And, you know, we never know what our actual retirements are gonna be, sometimes till very, very late in the year. And so, you know, you don't want to miss, but on the other hand, you don't want people to think that you're, you know, saying there's gonna be no turnover when you know historically you always have some.
But if I add the numbers up, I see the three fifty for the staff replacement, I see the hundred and ten, that's four sixty. And that's four sixty, so you've got sixteen at thirty-five not accounted for.
They're in the one-on-one line already.
They're in the one already, got it.
Yeah, they're baked in there.
Okay.
Exactly. That's one of the reasons why, you know, you hear there's a, you know, the, the teacher contract this year, when it was settled, the third year of the contract was a wage increase, including step of two point two-five percent. You'll notice that the, between the two teaching staff lines, one-on-one and one-on-three, if you did the math on that, they're not going up two point two-five percent. Part of that is because of turnover that's carried forward from prior years, and some of it is because we take sixteen retirements out.
And actually, if you compare what your budget is to what the actual run rate is, they are going up by two point five percent, not one percent.
Say that again?
If you compare the, the actual run rate on your staff salaries versus what you've budgeted, you are actually at a two and a half percent increase versus what is on here as a one point five-six because what you're comparing to is last year's budget, which we're ahead of budget by almost nine hundred thousand dollars.
Now, I'm not sure of the run rate, but we budget based on who's actually in the positions at the time we do the budget. So, if we've saved money this year beyond the sixteen retirements, at the time we do the budget, we carry over the actual people and their salaries and bump them up. Changes after we do the budget don't get included in there. But if we were to save, let's say we had an extra seven retirements, and the actual amount for teaching staff was gonna come in less than what we budgeted, then that would work favorably towards this budget. Because we, we budget, actually take every single person who's currently on the staff at the current salary schedule, and we move them up a step or whatever it takes. So, we're actually budgeting to actual, as of the moment we put this together. And we don't just simply take the budgeted amount and move it forward because the budgeted amount and the actual amount we're gonna spend in there may not be the same. So, we're actually, you know, if you look under the, right, in the teaching, and that's both, that's also true of school administration staff as well, the same, the same drill. So, the budgeted amount to the proposed amount is gonna be less than two and a quarter percent.
It, it's two and a half percent over your actual run rate if you go back a page. So, if you flip back a page?
Yep.
And you look at column, I call it column C, which would be your actual, which is your run rate of ninety-seven, five, ninety-one, first line, third column?
Right.
You're two and a half percent over that actual versus what's being shown here. The one point five-six is actually over budget. So, we've got our two and a half percent bump in here, so it looks like we have an opportunity with the retirements that would not be in here.
No, they're in there.
They're in there.
So, we'll have to tie that out, but it's, you know, we don't simply take the budget and add the whatever to it. So, you could see that budget over budget, it's one point five-six. The contract's actually two point two-five. So, not sure what the differential is.
Right, and all I'm saying is budget over actual is two and a half. Estimated actual right now.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? Shall we move on to benefits? One more question on salaries?
Just one editorial aside on that, as board members are in a position to talk about this, and as you get retirement questions, I'll be honest with you, I hate that question because the last thing we should be wanting to do and looking to do is find the most inexperienced, i.e. inexpensive, teachers possible. And yet, it's an expectation of this town that we face, and I've heard it when we speak with the other town bodies. And I would love to budge nothing for that because that we could get an experienced teacher in to replace a leaving experienced teacher, but that's just an editorial aside.
Editorial comment, right?
I think you should propose a policy.
Right. Well, I want to, I think we'd all like to have more.
Actually, and I do want to provide some data on that. I won't do it now, but I think there is some misconception out there about what our practice has been around hiring experienced teachers. And I think we actually hire more experienced teachers than people think. So, I actually want to get you some data on that for the most recent year so you can see it. We don't, when we budget for retirements, just to be, be clear about that, we don't budget the full amount for every retirement as if we're gonna hire a step-one beginning teacher for every, every retirement. Because if we did that, we wouldn't budget a thirty-five thousand dollar differential. The differential would be fifty-five or sixty. So, as we budget, we do have discretion and allow and do hire experienced people in to different positions depending. So, if we were to sort of be forced into our, to meet our budget, we would be taking a lot more per retirement than we actually take. So, I, I do want to get some data out there because I think that is a bit of a misconception. And I've probably been softer than my predecessor on allowing people to bring experienced people in because the principals beat me down on it out there. I'm looking at the two high school headmasters in particular, so.
Okay.
We, we, there's been more of it.
Any other questions on salaries? If not, we'll move to benefits. Any questions on the benefit side? Any questions on the benefit side? You know, this is kind of picking up the conversation from December, but any questions on the benefit side?
Sure, I have one on pension.
Yep.
Same page?
Mr. Llewellyn?
Sure. So, can you explain the whole pension, why we're going up by fourteen percent when the market is up by thirty percent? We should actually be going down by fifteen or twenty percent.
I'm with you. I completely agree. It's the same question I asked. And basically, the town works with Hooker and Holcomb, and Hooker and Holcomb gives us a preliminary number. And that's what we put in here. The explanation that I've been given is that market returns are smoothed over a period of time, and they're still working off some bad experience from five and six years ago. I will be the first to tell you that I am not a pension expert. And we know in the past that the preliminary number that we've budgeted has been revised by Hooker and Holcomb. Often, it's revised subsequent to the board's approval of the budget, unfortunately. So, there's a series of projections, and I think that if you really want to get into the specifics of it, then I think Mr. Mayor would, would do a much better job of explaining it than I possibly could. And I am not an actuary, and I can't play one on TV, so we basically budget what we're told. And then, at a future point, they reconsider that, then we're free to reduce that, which has happened in the past.
And remember this, this is a town-sponsored retirement plan. The teachers and the administrators are in the state plan, not part of our budget.
So, this is just for the non-
And maybe we could assign Mrs. Lou McCormick.
What percent are we?
We could assign Mrs. Lou McCormick, who is the liaison to the Board of Finance, because they spend, like, every, every quarter, they have a substantial conversation about the pension and why they have to add this number or that number to it, and why they want to add this number or that number to it because this town prides itself on fully funding our pension costs. Other towns don't do that. But that's all of a conversation that really takes place at the Board of Finance, not here. We just put the number in that we get as a result of a memo.
So, you had a question about numbers?
Yeah, what, what percent of the town's pension is the Board of Ed? Do you have any idea? Just rough terms?
I'm not sure. I mean, their, all of their employees are in the town pension plan.
Right.
So, you know, our non-certifies are in there, so we have, what, you know, maybe four hundred or so town. I'm not sure how many employees they have, but all of theirs are, are in there. But I think it's probably on their, I know that Mr. Flynn has been anxious to get the report because he, so it may be on their February fourth agenda, and we'll be there anyways because we have items for them, so maybe we'll get some insights at that point. But I was just perplexed, not only because the, you know, now, again, the market returns that they use this are as of June thirtieth. So, the big run-up between June thirtieth to thirteen and, and January first, that end of the year, are not part of this. So, you have to go back to the, they do it by a fiscal year. But, see, I thought the combination of higher interest rates, being able to use a higher discount rate, plus return on investment being, you know, much higher than the, the assumptions, would be, we'd be in great shape this year. I was figuring this should be a zero, and we got hit with this. So, believe me, I would, I would love to be told to zero that thing out and go back to the current number. And if we can convince them to do it, I'm, I'm with you.
So, do they walk you through the numbers, or you just take them?
Oh, they, they give us a, see, they don't even have, at the time we do this, they don't even have, like, an official report from Hooker and Holcomb. So, they basically give us a, a figure to put in. The actual report from Hooker and Holcomb, I'm not sure that's even out yet, or it's scheduled to be out very shortly, and then you can see it. But, so as soon as the Hooker and Holcomb report comes out, they make it public. It's done. And then, you guys can sink your teeth into it, and if you think we're being overcharged, then I'm all ears.
And is that revised, like, once they get more recent number between now and then? So, if this number should actually go down between now and next year?
And last year it went up.
And last year it went up.
It can go up or down depending on Hooker and Holcomb's most recent advice.
So, but the question, what, so the- So, but the question, what, so the timing of this never works out for the Board of Ed. It always works out for the other town bodies, because maybe it was two years ago when it went down. And so, in fact, I remember sitting in these conversations, because it went down so much. Some people wanted to actually reduce it below the current amount, and the Board of Finance said, no, we want to keep it at the current level, because we don't want to have it. All this discussion was taking place in February and March. And of course, by then, your budget is, you know, you're done with the budget. And so essentially, it gives, so let's suppose this number goes down by $200,000, in a hypothetical world. That gives basically the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance the opportunity to cut our budget by $200,000 and announce, we've cut the Board of Ed budget by $200,000, knowing that it's coming out of pension. Unfortunately, the timing is such that the Board of Ed doesn't get the same opportunity. That's, the timing of this doesn't usually work for us. That's what we're handed. I was surprised. I really was expecting, I was just like you, I was expecting a zero.
Yeah, right.
Well, anyway, and that's the, look, okay, these guys are hired by the town. They're actuaries, they know a lot more about this than I do.
But the essence is, they give us a number, we put it in.
Right. We're being good soldiers.
And there's not a lot of discussion that we have on it at all, because it's in the control of the Board of Finance to kind of run through that numbers and come up with a number that they feel comfortable for the town pension plan. Other questions on benefits?
In terms of the health insurance, are food service employees under that health plan? That same health plan, in that line 201?
Yes, they were.
So when they're out in-
This includes their being out.
And we're still up?
4 percent.
Okay.
Roughly.
And then what about the shortfall from prior years that is payable from food services to-
We, when we, why don't we talk about food service in total?
I just want to talk about health plan, that's fine.
Yeah, there are-
Yeah, we can talk about food service in total.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions on benefits? If not, the next one, instructional services or contracted services? Once we get through salaries and benefits, which is about 80 percent of our budget, the rest of the lines generally go a lot quicker. But any questions on the next two, instructional services or contracted services? Mr. Fattabim, followed by Mr. Patton.
Line 409, student activity expenses. There's just a note to that that says, "Increase is the result of principal headmasters directing a greater share of their schools' allocation to the area of sports cost." I just want to know, what does that mean, "sports cost"?
Sports cost would be things like cost of officials, cost of uniforms, that sort of thing. We had deferred some purchases of sports uniforms that they're trying to catch up on, based on prior cuts that were made to the budget. So the headmasters have the opportunity to readjust year over year. So that's a good, good part of it. I don't know if Jim or Greg want to opine on this one, or did I capture it? That's the answer. Those costs go up every year, officials get more money, and transportation-
Eventually, we're going to find a question that requires you to come forward.
Right, right. I think I got the main, the main idea there.
Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly.
Just as a follow-up to that, when you're talking about reallocating it, what was it taken from?
You actually have to go into the detail of the, of the schools, and you'll, you'll seize the plusing and minusing in there. And we basically, just so people know how we budget some of these at the school level, every school is given an allocation based on a formula, based on the number of students. And then we basically give the freedom to the principals and headmasters to allocate that out to the lines as they see appropriate. And so what happens is, you know, they might have a particular need in one year to put some money to beef up, say, the inventory for something. And then they don't need to keep that going, and so then the next year, they can beef up something else. So they're constantly shifting around within an area. They may decide they need some more money for traveling conference, because they're doing something particular with professional development. That may only be for one year, and then the next year, they don't need it. So you can see it, because in every school, you can see the budgeted amount, the actual and the budgeted for the next year, so.
And that's true of the technology as well. This, I guess, we'll get into with the school reports?
Not the technology.
Smart boards or whatever, and the decisions of that?
Technology is not part of the allocations to the schools. They used to be, back in the old days. But what was happening there was that it led to wide discrepancies in access to technology, because it was part of the schools. So, can't remember when we did this, maybe three years ago. It might have been my first budget. We took all the technology capital, and, this is really capital we're talking about, right? We put that into a central line, and we have a technology plan that the board approved. And so Nancy Burns then allocates that out to try to, you know, beef up areas where one school may have fallen behind another and so forth. So if she notices that, you know, one high school has, you know, 20 classrooms that don't have projectors in them, and the other high school does, then she'll probably budget to make up that gap. It's not up to the principal or headmaster to do that. There's a separate equipment allocation that each school gets, separate from technology, and separate from the other allocation I spoke of. And that's one I did beef up this year, because we have been way behind in that account. And that's to, that's to replace worn-out equipment that's not technology. And in that area, the principal does have discretion working with our school services liaison about where that goes. That, those accounts used to be three and four times what they are, and now, as you know, high school equipment is very expensive in a lot of these programs, and we're not able to keep up with it.
Mr. Patton? I think you were next.
I had the same question, Mr. Fattabim, so it's been answered. Thank you.
If there are no other instructional or contracted services questions? Yep, there is, Mr. Fattabim.
Page 30, or 39, item 305, professional technical services. There seems to be a fairly substantial increase in 305. And I guess I just want to know what's driving that increase. The note says, "Increase of legal services," and I want to know-
There you go, lawyers.
Lawyers, they're just too darn expensive.
Darn expensive.
Except for me.
Except for you.
They're getting the same rates that the school system pays, I guess.
We get good rates. We get very good rates.
What's driving the increase of legal services?
Well, we've been over-expending that account now for a couple of years, and we're really just trying to catch the budget up closer to reality. I'm not even sure that will completely capture it. One of the things that's driving it is when you have all these unsettled contracts out there, and you're constantly meeting with the union, and you're constantly going to mediations, and maybe sometimes even preparing for arbitration. You know, we've been negotiating, how many, five non-certified contracts simultaneously this year? And then next year, well, we know some of those are going to settle, we hope. Well, two have settled. But next year is teachers and administrators. And those are even more expensive to negotiate, because the time is much more extensive, the preparation, it's quite expensive to do that. So these ongoing negotiations, as these contracts drag out, get very expensive. And we have had an increase in our legal expenses on the special ed side, because, you know, when lawyers are brought to bear by the parent, then we have to bring our lawyer to bear. So that's part of it as well. And so I think that those are probably the biggest two factors. Contracts seem to be taking a lot longer to settle than ever before, and that just drags out our, our legal fees, because as you know, they get paid by the hour.
As a follow-up to that, can you break that number down for us between contracts, special ed, and everything else?
I think we can do that.
That'd be good, thanks.
We can do that.
And like, you know, over like a two or three-year period, because I'd like to see-
At least in round numbers.
Right.
Yeah, at least in round numbers, because there's a big catch-all category that may not be, you know, there's, there's different buckets for this. We'd have to go back and look at that. But, you know, it's fairly easy to do special ed versus non-special ed, because we use two different firms. And so we know that if it's, you know, the special ed is very easily separated, and I think we actually have to keep track of that for purposes of filing with the state anyways. On the, on the non-special ed side, we have to go, actually go back through that and tease it out, but we can give you some ballpark.
And which is the firm?
We use Durant Nichols for non-special ed, and we use Michelle Lawbin's firm, Hurcham, Moses, and Devlin for the special education.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we use, oh, yeah, and Rose Callor, oh, this is also a non-trivial area. Rose Callor is our insurance. Whenever there's a claim that is covered by our insurance, then the town has a contract with Rose Callor, which is a law firm in Hartford, and they handle those claims. So if we get a complaint, say it's a CHRO complaint, Human Rights and Opportunities complaint, that's a complaint that would be covered by insurance, and so that complaint wouldn't go to Durant Nichols, that would go off to Rose Callor. And we pay them up to the deductible for their services. So that's another firm that we use.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
We're done with instruction, oop, contract, instructional and contracted services?
Um, yeah, I think so, yeah. The security services? I was just wondering, I see, you know, we've spent more, which makes sense, but I don't know that we ever really had a follow-up on the security recommendations and how we're actually spending our money.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because the ground has shifted a bit on this from the time the budget was put together. When we were at the-
Security meeting.
Security, I don't know, session, summit, I don't know what we call it, informational forum. At that meeting, the first selectman announced that he wanted to take the report that the police department put together for the board, and also look at the town needs for security, and put together a sort of a full game plan, and bring that forward almost as a separate category of some kind, maybe even a separate funding request to the town. So we're in the process now of, and this is, Tom and Sal from our staff are involved with the police department in identifying what are the priorities and what could, are the costs of that. And then the first selectman's going to put that into a comprehensive plan that he hopes to bring forward during this budget season. At the time we put this budget together, though, that was not known, that that was the way it was going to work. And so what I've done here in this budget is, knowing that we have some needs, and at that point, not even having the police report, but knowing what some of the recommendations, knowing ourselves that we had some areas we wanted to beef up, I added $160,000 to this line with no detail, because we wouldn't want to share that, obviously, in a public document. And my thinking was that, plus the grant that we got through Sal's effort and Tom's effort, would give us about a $300,000 pool to do some infrastructure work in the, in the schools. This does not do anything in terms of personnel. Big part of what the police want to do, as you remember, from, maybe from last year, is they want to beef up and really create a school security department with personnel as well. But that would be off in the police department budget, so they're taking care of that. So this really is for infrastructure improvements. If it turns out that the first selectman's going to go forward, and the town bodies want to fund this a different way, then it may be this is something that we wouldn't need to carry in our budget. But at the time the budget was done, we didn't know that was happening. So this is a bit of a placeholder.
Yeah, so we're kind of waiting for the first selectman first to say whether the costs that he's looking at for the town and the school district costs will be bundled together in a separate funding request to the town bodies. The other thing we have to wait for is, while we might put the 160 in there, until we get through the budget process, we don't know whether we have 160 or we have zero to spend. Because of course, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the first selectman and the RTM can be making their own independent budget decisions and allocation how much money to us. So hopefully, board members will have a chance to come in and read the security report that we looked at at the last executive session. And somewhere between now and when we have a better feel from how the town's going to handle this and what money will be available, we can meet again in executive session and look at those, quote, "specific priorities" and get advice from our staff and chat about it. But right now, it's kind of up in the air.
So we have three items that are up in the air that will be clarified after-
Which ones are you talking about?
Security.
Yeah.
Fuel costs, and pension retirement. Those are all kind of flexible, will be adjusted possibly at a later date?
Fuel's probably not in the same category as the other two.
Because we think we can project that accurately.
Yeah, we're, we, you know, we're probably not going to have enough information. I mean, it's possible, by the time you have to make this, if there's a cut to the budget, if there's a cut to the budget, will we have greater idea about our actual fuel usage by then? The answer would be yes. And that could go either way, positively or negatively. Pension, that should be cleared up, I would say, within the next month, you know, definitively.
As I was saying, so within, we have three placeholder items right now that could possibly adjust to different numbers in a month.
I don't think the fuel will adjust in a month.
You don't think so?
No.
Okay.
I don't think you got, there's not a lot of hope there. I mean, I think that, you know, that may be clearer in four months than it is now. But, you know, a budget does contain estimates in it. I mean, that's the nature of it. It's actually, the technical name of the budget is an itemized list of estimated expenditures. So sometimes these things get clearer, and sometimes they don't. But those are, the two, the pension and the security are definitely something that there should be a lot more clarity on a month or six weeks from now than we have right now.
So let me move on to transportation and tuition, because I'm looking at the time, and, you know, we have by object code and we have by school, and so some of these same questions can be brought up at that time as well. But go ahead, Mrs. Maxon.
For line 307, the professional expenses, the addition 151,000, is this, are these the known expenses? Because it's a reflection that we had to adjust because of this year's initially, I mean, additionally incurred expenses. I mean, I see at least some mention of outside contractors.
Correct.
That's not outplacement, but-
Right.
Is this tied to that, or is this just a separate anticipation?
No, this is, you know, if you recall, not only have we overrun the added district tuition account this year, but we've overrun two other accounts, special education. We've overrun the professional expenses line slash consultation line, as well as the line we use to conduct the outside evaluations. There's two separate lines in there, both of which are over-expended. And so this is related to the professional expenses and special education that we are over. And we have been consistently running over, and we're trying to bring the budget closer to reality and not pretend that we're not going to go there again.
Okay. Transportation, tuition, any questions on those sections? We've had, we've asked some questions on transportation, but any additional questions on transportation and tuition?
Somebody had a question, I want to clear up on tuition. I forgot who asked it, and this is a fairly easy one. The total tuition cost increased 34 percent, and the special ed tuition cost increased 39 percent. How can that be? Somebody asked that question. The answer is, we have other tuitions that are included in there other than special education. We pay tuition, it's a, they're much smaller numbers, and it's in the detail, to the Regional Center for the Arts, to the Vocational Agriculture School, and so forth. And we anticipate those actually going down. So those, other tuition to those schools, based on the number of kids we're expected to have there and continuing students, that's actually showing a decrease. So that's offsetting a bit of the special education costs.
Is this primarily the surprise 17?
Yes.
That's this.
That's what this is. And this is carrying those costs forward. But the question that had come in in writing was, well, if we have a 39 percent in special education tuition, why doesn't this go 39? And the answer is, there's another component to tuition other than special ed. It's not nearly this size. And there's detail on that. Somebody find the page for me, because it's out in detail. Number of kids and which schools they go to, right? That's in here? It's in the back somewhere.
So it's in the back.
The loyal staff will find a page number, and you can, you can see which programs-
And they'll shut it out, and I'll repeat it. Transportation, tuition, are we on to other purchase services and supplies? Transportation, tuition, are we onto other purchase services and supplies?
Page 151? Is there a different page? Let me get there and I'll tell you.
That's the, that's the special education out-of-district tuition.
And, oh, you're talking about the other?
I'm talking about the voag.
Page 89.
Yeah, okay, you win the prize. Is that it?
Okay, so, other purchase services and supplies, texts and materials, those two sections?
There's a chart.
Let's go back to tuition.
We'll get the answer to the question as to where the detail is. You still have a question on tuition, not, not the detail, but another question?
The detail on the...
The question that is, where is that described? That the staff are going to look for where the page that describes?
It was 89, wasn't it?
Page 89?
Yeah, no, that's not my question.
A different question.
Yeah, no, I guess I'm still looking at the numbers of, and the timing. I'm still on page 41, tuition. So I, I'm looking at the number and saying, you know, it's up by 34%. And, you know, it might be helpful to really kind of understand what the process is to get a child an outplacement. Because my understanding is that that's a very long process. So I'd really kind of like to hear what the process is and how we had 17 folks come through when normally only several come through in the course of a year.
17 new versus?
Versus what Andrea said last time, several. Andrea, over to you.
And again, put the microphone close for the...
The process is different for each and every child we go through. And sometimes the process can be very long because we are implementing interventions at the school level and we're working through data on whether those, when there's a response to that intervention. And so sometimes the process can be long. And sometimes the process is much more crisis oriented, in which case it can be very short. It can be a student who is psychiatrically hospitalized three times in a month and is outplaced in 30 days. It can be that quick, from not even being in special ed to being in an outplacement in 30 days. So I think it is, the process is very individual and it happens based on the individual needs of that child and where they are in the process. We have some students who, who stay with us for long periods of time and then have an escalation in behavior. And we try to intervene, but those interventions don't prove to improve, they don't improve the behavior. And therefore, we have to seek a higher level of intensity of service that can't be performed within the public school. So there are, each instance is quite different. I can't necessarily get into each specific detail for you, but the process is different for each case. There are times when it takes, it could take a whole year to get from the beginning to an outplacement. There are other processes, other times when it takes a very short period of time depending on what's actually happening for the student and whether or not we have the resources to even conduct the level of intervention that that child might need to address that present level of performance.
Right, and I guess my question is because, you know, some parents wrote in with, you know, kind of their experiences. And when I see 17 come through, I just wonder, are there other things? Were there legislative changes that had any impact on what's transpired?
No.
So nothing changed in Hartford that made us change anything? Because I thought I'd read in one of these documents that there were new, there's some new legislation.
Well, there...
I thought I read it somewhere.
No.
No?
Not with respect to special education that I'm aware of.
With respect to special education, there's new legislation that we're in the, that hasn't been, it goes into effect next year that will have some impact on the whole school safety and student behavioral side that may ultimately impact in this arena. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that there's anything that specifically spoke to this. There are other instances, if you look at the 17 that I talked about in more global terms, 10 of those students were placed by PPT teams. So a PPT team, a student presented with a particular need, a range of needs that couldn't, where those needs couldn't be met within the public schools. And those students were placed out and those were rather rapid placements. We had three students who moved into town that we didn't know about a year ago in October. There's no way to predict for that. And those PPT teams met and determined that we did not have the resources to provide for those students within the district. And then there were students who were placed out by their parents and who we then processed and went through the process with to resolve those disputes. I understand that, you know, parents have their own individual experiences, but not all experiences are the same.
No, I agree.
In the sheet that we reviewed at the last meeting, that the box down below that said, here are four categories that the 17 fell into. And so when you say, where did the 17 come from? At least that provides some break.
That was at the Board of Finance meeting, not at our meeting. Right.
That was...
No, it was at the Board of Finance meeting.
I have the sheet here, can you identify where that is? I think this is the sheet you're referring to.
And Andrew, who signs off on it? So the process is the PPT team, you said, did that. And then who ultimately signs off on the outplacement?
Well, once the PPT has made a decision, the decision is made.
Okay.
The PPT team is the, they're, each PPT team must have an administrator present who can designate district resources, i.e. tuition. So that each and every PPT has the power to designate those resources through the administrator present. Often, you know, often myself or a coordinator will get a call from a building saying, we have concerns about a student. We think we're going to need to look at outside resources. Not because they can't allocate resources, but because they don't always have the knowledge base of what the outplaced programs can provide. So they seek our assistance and will work with the teams and the families. And because we know the outplacements, we know what they can provide, what the services are, and we can get involved at that point. So the PPT itself signs off on those services. And once the recommendation is made, then we are obligated to pay those, pay for that tuition.
But the second level is if parents make an independent... The PPT is not the only decision maker. If a parent makes an independent judgment...
Oh, that's a long process.
That's another step.
The, well, the dispute resolution processes that are available under the federal legislation, the IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, are available to each and every parent of a child with a disability should they, should they have a disagreement with what the district believes represents a free and appropriate public education. That process, whether it be a full-blown due process hearing, which can take a very long time and is very costly, but there are steps in between dispute resolution processes like mediation, for example, where both parties come together and attempt to resolve the conflict at the lowest possible level. That can be done and, you know, can be done in a matter of, you know, months or, you know, it doesn't take a year to do. You know, it's just a matter of scheduling, mediation. And it's often done very quickly.
And the reason I ask the question is because of this dramatic shift, not in the fact that we shouldn't be providing services, far from that. If the children need services, we need to provide them. I'm just, you know, wondering how it is that, you know, a population grows by 20% without any recognition ahead of time. So, thank you.
Want me to answer that or do you not?
We provided a, we provide, we emailed a sheet that that box that I'm referring to went to all board members. So that breaks down in four categories where the 17 came from. And if you look at that and say, I have other questions, you might want to just set up a meeting with Andrea to go into it in more detail. I'm going to suggest that we not move on to other purchase services at the moment because as I look at the hour, I'd like to make sure that we get to the food service part of this budget, this meeting agenda. And then after the food service, we'll take the temperature of the board as to whether we're chugging through to 11 o'clock or whether we're stopping at 10:30. So who is handling the food service questions that, that are? The pages that are in the back of the book, 169 or so, 168 to 171. But also a financial report that was provided to the board at the last meeting or in the board packet, I think. There may be questions that come off of that as well. So I think Mr. Llewellyn, you had the interest, so I'll recognize you first.
Okay, thanks.
Even without your hand up.
Sure, thank you. So what I'm trying to understand is, I go back to the memo dated November 30th where it says that we have liabilities of $430,000, of which $170,000 is owed to the medical retention fund. And at my understanding, this is built up over several years. I guess the question is, why is it, you know, now kind of coming to full light? And that 170 from the medical retention fund, my understanding, was not last year's liability but the prior year. Who, who paid the medical benefits for those employees for that year?
The medical retention fund.
Okay, so someone needs to be paying into that fund. So is no one paying into that fund for these employees?
The, the medical retention fund itself is that, is the page in the budget book that encompasses all our claims. That's based more on claims. The contributions from, from employees and our payment into it are in there and are keeping that, that fund going. The piece that the food service program itself owes for the employer portion hasn't been contributed.
Okay, so there is a payable?
Right. Now, last year, they did contribute half, half a year's worth of, they did all of their, all of their pension for last year and half of their medical retention and other cost. It became clear halfway through the year that they, they just wouldn't be able to sustain that. So we kept the program going and, and, you know, just created the liability for the, for the program to those specific places, the medical retention fund and the Board of Ed.
And is that liability going to now impact our budget? Or, I mean, how is that money going to be paid to the medical retention fund? Or is that, is the food service fund not going to be paying medical for a year? There's a, there's a payable and someone owes somebody money.
Right.
Who's going to pay that money or is it not going to be paid? It's going to be written off so to speak as bad debt.
That's something that we'll have to, to determine. I, last year, the 200,000 that's owed from last year would have to be paid because that year's closed. As to what we do with the liability from this year, we'll have to decide when, I think as it gets closer to the end of the year and we, we see how things progress this year. And also how, what happens with the RFPs that come in.
Okay, and so that was the year prior to last. Last year, what was not, what's the accounts payable for last year? Who do they, who do they owe money to from last year?
It's about 200,000, 100,000 to medical retention and 100 to us.
And who is us?
The Board of Ed.
The Board of Ed. And through what fund? What, what, what do they not pay?
Well, the medical retention, it was the health insurance.
Right, and what's the other?
The other 100 is half a year's worth of that 200,000. The, the utilities, the custodial.
Okay.
Okay.
So who paid that on their behalf?
It was set up as a payable.
Okay, so the general fund.
The bills still had to be paid, so the cash had to come from somewhere.
Right, we took care of the utilities.
That's the point.
So the utilities aren't owed the money? They, the utilities receive money?
For last year, we do.
Okay, and for, for this year as well? I'm assuming the utilities are getting paid.
For this year, it would be easier to just absorb it because it hasn't been closed yet.
Okay, so, and, and the money, so there's an account? The food service fund owes money to who specifically, which funds?
Medical retention.
And?
And general fund, Board of Ed, general fund.
The general fund. So is the internal grant fund part of the general fund? Internal private grant?
What do you mean by internal grant fund?
Internal grant fund, fund number?
70?
70?
That's the food service fund.
Okay, so fund number 25?
What's fund 25?
Internal grant fund, internal private grant fund.
No, those are state or federal grants.
Interesting, okay. I thought that there was money due to that fund.
To grants?
To the fund 25. They booked revenue from, the food service fund was my understanding.
I, no.
No?
I don't know what you're referring to.
If you have a specific reference, you might want to send that so that she can research it.
So, so at the end of the day, is this going to impact our budget, Dr. Title?
That all depends on how they do between now and the end of the year. Because we have started to see, we haven't finalized this yet, but we have started to see an uptick in purchasing of lunch this year in December. We think the thing is headed in a better direction right now. But is it possible that you get to the end of the year and you have, they can't make their payment for, say, the utilities or they can't make their payment for the other in-kind that we've been, you know, charging them for? It's possible, but we don't know what that is. We don't know, you know, whether that's going to be a big thing or whether as part of the process here, as part of the RFP, a vendor might come forward and help us out. And that's a possibility, but the bids aren't in yet. So it could, conceivably it could. It could be that they can't pay. I mean, they have plenty of cash on hand. We haven't had to transfer any money into their account. But some of this in-kind that we were expecting from them, it's possible that they can't pay it by the end of the year, but it's too soon to tell.
But the medical service fund is from two years ago, correct?
No, it's just last year and this year.
From 2012 and 2013. And then there was a balance going into that year as well, I thought.
No.
Okay, I'll look. So who's going to reimburse the medical retention fund?
I think you had answered that, that the prior years, they would have to pay.
Correct, so I'm asking who?
It would come out of their, the balance that they're carrying.
Sorry, they is whom?
The food service.
Food service program.
The food service, I'll back up again for the benefit of the public. So four, five years ago, Prismatic Audit looked at a fund balance in the food service fund of north of $1 million. And their advice to the school district was, you should be more aggressive in making charges of food service, custodial and utility costs to the food service to reduce that to a appropriate level. Because carrying a $1 million operating fund balance was not an appropriate level. We have done that now for three or four years and that fund balance has been whittled down to about a half a million at the moment, probably a little bit less.
Lot less.
And of course, from a cash basis, less if you take into account the liabilities, the accounts payable that they have. But you do have to maintain a certain amount of a cash balance to, just to allow for general operations. And so what Dr. Title, I think, has alerted us to is that depending on what happens with the food service at the balance of the year and what happens with the responses to the RFQ for food service, we may or may not, this year, have to entertain going back to where historically we were, which was covering the custodial and utility costs. But we got relieved of that so that we could whittle away this operating balance of $1 million.
So we would expect, I mean, we'll be back on the medical part, I think.
Yeah, that's where I'm hanging up.
Yeah, so we would, I'm sure I'm clear on this, Doreen, that we expect that they'll be able to pay off, they have to pay off the debt from last year on the medical retention fund. And this year, they have another debt to the medical retention fund.
Right.
And we are expecting that they can pay that as well, but they may not be able to pay us for the utilities and some of the other things. Is that accurate?
That's how I would see it playing out.
And, and just to be clear, though, that medical piece is north of $200,000, correct?
I'm sorry?
That medical piece alone is north of 200,000?
For last year?
Cumulative.
It's thereabouts, yeah.
Okay, so that money is...
Between the two years.
Right.
Ah, yeah, no, so I mean, I'm just saying, if that needs to be paid back, that needs to be in this budget or it doesn't? Because they're not going to be able to do it unless, you know...
I think the answer was the prior year's amount, quote, "has to be paid back because those books are closed."
Correct.
The current year's amount, this board could say, we're going to cover that out of operations because they can't fund it. But that's a decision that is pending because we're waiting for those, the end of the year, the RFQ, to be able to come up with a knowing.
Okay, so, do we need to put that in the budgets, what I'm asking? Because it needs to be reimbursed.
In the operating... You mean in the Board of Ed operating budget?
Correct.
Right, no, I think we're going to... In my view, we would make the medical retention fund whole first. We don't have to mess with that. And then, if it gets to the point where we get to the end of the year and we have to bail them out and we're transitioning to a new vendor, so, you know, you say, we've got to clear the books. Then, when we do our transfer request at the end of the year, we'd have to come forward with a request for you all to do that as part of the balancing off of this year's budget. That's how it would play out. So, you'd see exactly what it is. Just too soon to tell what that number might be, you know? If the program continues and moves forward, could be a minimal number or no number. Just have to wait and see that play out for a few more months, so...
Yeah, because the balance from twelve-thirteen is over a hundred thousand, a hundred and five. And I'm not sure what you've accrued this year. And then, you've got a hundred and two, which is your other accounts payable. So, I just want to raise that and want to understand.
No, it's a valid question.
And, you know, I mean, at this point, do we need to have a... For the board's sake, do we need to have our auditors, you know, take a look at this and let us know that everything's actually okay with it? If the fund, according to what has been provided to us, you know, we have a negative fund balance. So, do we need our auditors to take a look at this and say, you know, everything was copacetic?
I think we have the... We know what the math is, so I'm not sure that we need to pay...
But I'm not sure the math or what's transpired is in conformance with accounting principles of the law.
The account... The fund is audited every year along with the board and the town fund.
Okay, so, then the auditors will be okay saying everything's fine, right?
Yeah, I mean...
You're saying an interim?
Yeah, but I mean, the... We're audited every year.
Right.
Yeah, so, the auditors will be looking at all of our operations, including this.
Right, but that doesn't mean they audit the individual funds. Auditing is a very high-level thing. So, if we could get them to look at this and let us know everything's good, that's good. Especially if we're going to be representing things to folks for the RFP.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly, you also had a comment or question?
I thought we had received a report at one point, which kind of detailed a little bit the finances in terms of literally a breakdown of elementary school students buying lunch, the middle school kids buying lunch. And we actually saw the numbers and the direction that they had gone so that we had a better understanding of why things weren't going as well and saw the impact of the different lunch programs, et cetera. I don't know if...
It's in June.
Yeah. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, in May, we generally have the food service staff come in and talk programmatically, administratively, what's happening to the student lunch count as Mrs. Max and Cannelly was talking about. And then, we, in June, look at the budget. So, we have two other bites at the apple, to use a...
Great.
Food service pun. Where we can further invest... Further chat about this.
Well, if you could either provide me something from the auditors or provide me the audit partner's name, I'd like to just understand it. Is that a auditor, right? Yes? Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Fattabey?
I just have a couple of simple questions, I guess, just to help me clarify my understanding of this. This sheet that was passed out at the quarterly review last meeting. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, there's an item that says accounts payable six slash thirty, going over to the actual column, at the very last column, eleven-thirty-two thirteen. I guess that's an actual as of eleven-thirty-two thirteen. It identifies that an account's payable of eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand nine eighty-six. So, I assume that's encumbered funds and that's an account payable that is yet to be paid. The question is, do they have enough cash to pay that incurred obligation? And the answer to that, I guess, is no. I mean, that's my understanding, so...
There's a big portion of that number that's deferred revenue. It's not... It's a liability in that it's money that parents have put on their child's account, but we haven't earned it. There's not a sale yet, so it's called deferred revenue. So, it's not all money that is payable to a party for something, but it is a liability.
Where's the offsetting asset? Where's the cash sitting?
Sorry?
Where's the... It's a liability, which means we have the cash sitting someplace else.
Where is the cash sitting on the offset?
Correct.
And a balance sheet?
How much is in the cash fund? How much is that liability?
Right.
You may not have enough cash even to pay your liabilities that have yet to accrue. But why don't we do one question at a time?
Yeah.
I think we're just trying to clarify because it looks like she's not understanding the question.
Well, I think she understands the question. I'm not sure that the level of detail...
You're saying that accounts payable, a portion that accounts payable is not just the money due that already has been expended, but it's a portion of monies that have been pre-deposited to pay for school lunches that have not yet been served.
Right.
That money, I would dare say, is held somewhat in trust, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, that money what?
In my opinion, that money would be somewhat held in trust because it's... You're holding it on behalf of the students, then how you not yet received that benefit of the school lunch. So, that is, in my mind, separate kinds of money. That's a prepayment that you're holding for the purpose of providing lunch to children. But you may not have the money to do that because your cash balance is already too low to even pay the money and serve the lunches which you already been paid for. So, I'm not sure what point of that... What part of that eight forty-four... Eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars is money that is actually encumbered and spent and owed to someone? Or money that has been pre-deposited that in essence owed to students and you're holding on their behalf?
At that point in time, it was two-hundred-and-seventy was deferred revenue.
So, two-seventy is money that you're holding and so, you should hopefully at least have that amount in cash.
Well, the only...
Have that amount in cash, two-seventy.
The only way we would have... Way we would have to pay that out is if everybody asked for a refund.
Or they would eat lunch.
Or they would eat lunch, which...
That's right, that money...
Which we would then earn.
That, in essence, in my opinion, is their money. It's not your money yet until they eat the lunch. It's their money.
But it would come out of that account and go into sales when the lunch was sold.
But if the lunch wasn't sold, let's say they wanted their money back? What happens?
Then it would... That's what I said.
Do you have two-seventy cash in the account?
The only way we would have to pay that back is if everyone asked for a refund.
So, if we got to the end of the year and there was twenty thousand dollars on account because the kids didn't eat lunch and the parents wanted it back, we'd have to give it back to them.
Correct.
Right?
You would. In other words, at the end of the year, that money doesn't... It's not either you spend it or lose it. You're entitled to...
Or they roll it over to the next year.
No.
But you're entitled to it. In other words, it's their money. It's not our money.
Right.
It's in the cash balance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's in the five-hundred.
Five-hundred?
Yeah.
But your total existing liabilities are eight forty-four. Is that right?
Yes, less the amount that is held on behalf of students.
Right, which is two-seventy.
Two-seventy, so take two-seventy away from that number and that's what would be payables to either the Board of Ed or...
So, you don't have enough cash to satisfy your current liabilities?
No, we don't.
Right.
So, in essence, if the liabilities were paid and there was no payables, you would not have any cash balance whatsoever.
Correct.
So, the only reason you have a cash balance is because you're deferring payables.
Correct.
And all of this was part of the decision-making... Excuse me, was part of the decision-making process when, quote, "the old board voted last August to go to an RFQ because we saw this trend just continuing."
That's one reason why we're getting out of the business.
Mr. Llewellyn, do you have other food service questions? Other food service questions now? Okay, so, here's the sixty-four thousand dollar question.
I vote to adjourn, but I'm not a member.
We can pick up where we left off on the executive summary and then go through the object and school lines. I will tell you that generally, once we get this far into the executive summary, we don't have nearly as many questions on the line-by-line items. So, those sections sometimes go faster. They'll especially go faster if, tonight, because we'll get out early, you'll go home and spend twenty minutes typing up questions and sending them in to the superintendent. That always is helpful. So, what is the board's pleasure? To stop where we are or continue? I don't see a lot of enthusiasm, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.